Oh, you started. Oh, all these years I thought. Not that we needed to start it now, but. So you started from.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is six thirty P M. Tuesday, September seventh. Welcome to the regular city council meeting of today. Tuesday, September seventh. Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Hernandez.
Present.
Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Councilmember Perez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rollins.
Here.
And Mayor Gama.
Here.
All present.
If you could, please stand and join me in the flag salute.
Rock hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's inspiration will be provided by Councilmember Martinez.
In the form of a video.
Nice.
I'm happy to say the Wainimi Beach Festival was a great success. And while it was an exciting event for everybody that went, it wasn't easy. It took a lot of hard work, planning, and dedication from lots of people. From the reach board, city staff, the executive team, our community, and everyone else who participated at the event worked really hard. There's so many people for us to thank for making the Wainimi Beach Festival a reality. But there's one person in particular whom I can't think enough because they pour their heart and soul into the city. And at this event, it was no exception. That person is Chief Salinas. And yeah, there are many people for us to thank, but I really want to thank Chief Salinas because if you went to the event and you looked for him, you would have seen someone that was running up and down, making sure that everything went well, to make sure we were all safe and having a good time with our loved ones. And even though it wasn't perfect, it was the biggest and best Wainimi Beach Festival we have ever had in our city. I hope you're all inspired to continue to keep growing and to move forward in life because we are surrounded by people that really care about us and who are there for us when we need them. Thank you to everyone who came to this event and stay tuned for more videos. Yeah, and I just want to say that I'm really thankful that we have a great police chief, somebody that's always watching out for us and, you know, makes us feel safe in our community. Thank you, Chief Salinas.
Thank you. Nicely done, for sure. Okay, we're going to move now on to agenda approval. And before we have a motion, I would like to make a motion to move item number three up to the number one spot for a presentation due to the fact that we have family members here of those who are going to be recognized. Can I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Can we take a?
Mayor Gama.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Rollins.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we're going to start with the presentation by the Police Department. And before we do that, it's a great honor to publicly recognize and celebrate our Wainimi Police Department promotions. When I hear of a police officer getting shot in the line of duty anywhere, it makes me, as mayor, take pause and think about how our officers are respected and loved by our residents. When I hear of the tragedies like Ella French, it causes me to pause and thank God that none of our officers have fallen in our city. If you don't know who Ella French is, please search her name out, pray for her family, and pray for the continued safety of our police and all others. We support our police department and we recognize the dangers of our times. On behalf of the entire city council, I want to thank each and every officer for their service to our city. We respect your willingness to run into danger, and two times this year, we learned of our police performing extraordinarily in the face of extreme violence, which left one person dead and three others seriously injured. To our residents, I ask for your continued respect and support of our police. I ask you to pay forward your respect for our police to the younger persons of our community. Without law and order, we put at risk all we cherish. This time, I'd like to introduce Chief Andrew Salinas, who might get the title of slash, being that he does more than just being a chief of police for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city council, city staff. As I have said at previous promotional ceremonies, the most recent on June ninth, nothing brings a police chief greater pride than recognizing his fellow officers for their accomplishments and then the ability to also promote them within their own organization. So we are here tonight to recognize two such individuals, two very experienced officers, who went through a very rigorous and challenging testing process, which included a written test, a written supplemental exercise, and two oral interviews. Both these individuals established that not only are they prepared for this position, but they also truly care about our community. So with that, I'm going to start with Senior Officer Nora Starnah, if she can come on up with her husband Sergeant Eric Starnah. So to give you a little history on Nora, she started her career here with the Port Wainimi Police Department in two thousand and seven after serving as a reserve officer for the Santa Paula Police Department for two years. Nora is currently assigned to the Investigative Services Division and has a total of six years of experience as a criminal investigator. She's also a certified child forensic interviewer. Nora is a member of the Ventura County Financial Assistance Team, known as FAST, the Law Enforcement and Adult Protective Services Program, and the Ventura County Human Trafficking Task Force. She's one of the department's Crisis Intervention Team coordinators, the program coordinator for Wainimi Assisting Residents Together, also known as HART, and is a participant and coordinator for the Ventura County Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run. Nora attended the Police Academy at the Rio Honda College in Whittier and has over one thousand hours of additional specialized training. She is currently attending California Coast University where she's working to complete a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Nora's husband, Eric, is a sergeant with the Port Wainimi Police Department. She enjoys spending time with her family, giving back to the community by assisting crime victims and providing information on crime prevention. So everyone, I introduce to you Senior Officer Nora Starnah.
Congratulations.
If I could have Senior Officer Mike Hammerick come on up to the podium. Also known as Big Mike. Mike started his career with the Port Wainimi Police Department in two thousand and eleven as a lateral police officer from the San Bernardino Police Department, where he served from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and eleven. So Mike has been in law enforcement for thirty years now. During his tenure at the Port Wainimi Police Department, Mike was assigned to the Investigative Services Division from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty, during which he played an instrumental role in several major investigations, including six murder investigations and the attempted murder of a seven-year-old child and her pregnant mother. He's also a certified child forensic interviewer. Mike has represented the department in several public speaking events on topics relating to crime prevention and public safety. Mike is an exceptional public speaker and displays a level of genuineness to which people really respond to. He took a role in the area of active community education recently. Mike attended the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Academy and has over one thousand hours of additional specialized training. He holds an advanced post certificate and is currently finishing general education courses at Oxnard College to complete a bachelor's degree in sociology from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. He recently rotated back to the Patrol Division where he's serving as a field training officer. Mike and his wife, Bernardino, have three sons. Mike is also a defensive line coach for the Saint Bonaventure Varsity Football Team, who happens to be two and oh this year. He previously coached football at Oxnard High School. I present to you Senior Officer Michael Hammerick.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hernandez, do you have any comments?
Oh, I just wanted to offer both officers who I've known for a few years now. Congratulations, well deserved. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez.
I'd like to say the same. Congratulations, well deserved.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, and like I was trying to say in the video is just, I feel so protected here, living in Port Wainimi, and it's thanks to all of you. I know I was highlighting Chief Salinas, but it's him and your department and all of you, just thank you so much for your service.
Mayor Protem Rollins.
Yeah, I want to congratulate you, and I want to kind of make special note of the versatility this police force has. It seems like you have a number of different hats that you wear and you wear them proudly, getting involved in the community. And I mean, it makes you feel really warm being in this community because of, you know, your true care for the community and all aspects of it.
Thank you. And I want to congratulate the entire police department, especially you two tonight and Andrew, Chief Salinas. You know, in our country right now, there's a lot of police departments that aren't respected. And I think Port Wainimi Police Department is highly respected in our community. And I love the fact that our seniors love you, our kids love you, and all of us love you. And we see you. We saw in earlier this year, we had two violent situations where the police were on there, quickly, effectively took command of the situation and made us all proud. So couldn't be happier for your department, chief. Thank you all, and thank you all for your service. Moving down our agenda, I'm now going to go to item number two, the Wainimi Heroes Proclamation. And I'm going to read the proclamation as it's written. Twenty twenty-one, Wainimi Heroes, Friends of Ormond Beach. Whereas the city of Port Wainimi established a Wainimi Heroes Award to honor persons or groups who embody community values and have made extraordinary community contributions. And whereas Friends of Ormond Beach is an organization of Port Wainimi and Oxnard residents dedicated to protecting the Ormond Beach wetlands and the species therein. And whereas an honorable group of environmental stewards who protect the natural environment and champion others to participate in beach cleanups and encourage life practice of conservation. And whereas the Friends of Ormond Beach are a collective group of individuals who have dedicated many hours of their time to improving the environment and the coalition of people who are willing to take action. And whereas Friends of Ormond Beach advocate for Ormond Lagoon and the surrounding areas, partner with the Autobound Society, educate the community about environmental stewardship, and seek to increase volunteerism in and around Port Wainimi. And whereas there were unanimously recommended for the Wainimi Heroes Award for the City of Port Wainimi Citizens Advisory Commission and unanimously awarded the honor by the city council. And whereas the Friends of Ormond Beach were formally recognized in August at the twenty twenty-one Wainimi Beach Festival, we have a framed portrait in City Hall Lobby and will have their names inscribed on a hero's plaque, celebrating their accomplishments. And whereas the city of Port Wainimi is proud of the Friends of Ormond Beach and is thankful for their extraordinary community contributions. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of Port Wainimi hereby recognizes, honors the Friends of Ormond Beach as a twenty twenty-one Wainimi Heroes Award recipient and commends their contributions and volunteerism. Thank you.
Sir, can I briefly interrupt?
Yes.
Can we move back to general public comments?
Yes, we can. I'm sorry, I skipped over that.
No, absolutely.
So excited for our police presentations. Okay, general public comments, do we have any?
We do. So we have one present, so maybe we should start with Mr. Jacob Martinez.
Yes.
And then I also have five written ones that we'll read into the record.
Okay, thank you for steering me straight. Jacob, come on up.
Hello?
Hello. Your mic's on. Just think that we're all funny-looking people and it might be easier. Speak for yourself.
In addressing the Port Wainimi City Council concerning the city general plan and parks master plan, I would like to speak of changes concerning the Bubbling Springs Creek and also the rest of the city of Port Wainimi's landscaping problems and its natural history. Historically, this creek, located at Richard Bard Bubbling Springs Park near the Wainimi High School, was a naturally fluent landscape made up of wetlands and riparian habitats. But as a whole, there has been large amounts of ignorance and lack of respect for our natural heritage of the area. For this area was gifted to us in the year nineteen thirty by Richard Bard himself, who broke ground on the port of Wainimi itself. As such, the way the wetlands have been treated has been, to quote Mayor Stephen Gama himself, embarrassing. That first of all, the density of cat tails and bull rushes, more commonly known as reeds, has produced such an abundance of dense wetland and vegetation that has become the perfect festering ground for mosquitoes, which carry deadly diseases. What's more, the area has been planted with non-native species of trees and landscaping species, all of which have no ecological or even economic value, in addition to no aesthetic value. Most especially, the African tulip trees have large branches which often fall on top of cars or on people nearby. And very often, when there's even slight breezes or windstorms, they often fall and crack to the ground. Third of all, the wetlands are directly connected to diversions and as such, pollutants directly flow into the creek during the rainy season or when people are washing their cars or washing along the street. These pollutants are heavy and toxic metals, which can be very harmful to native species and wetland habitats. So much so, that not even amphibians can live in them. Not even in Caligus Creek in nearby Camarillo, which is so polluted and agricultural runoff, so as to be considered deadly toxic, has amphibians, which means our creek is polluted to such an extent that not even amphibians can live in it, whether non-native or native. No one would be proud of its current state. And speaking for the entirety of Wainimi High School and of the Wainimi youth and of the local youth in general, we must have a change. We do not want a festering ditch of non-native species. We want back our native habitats. We want the creek back, the same creek which Thomas Bard gave us. The solutions are simple and straightforward. Remove the reeds or increase the width of the creek itself, remove non-native species and harmful species, and replant with native species such as native plants so that the native ecosystem may recover. And also, at least, very least, take care of the waterway and no longer pollute it, or at the very least, remove trash from its creeks and its banks.
Jacob, you're just about at the three-minute mark. If you could wrap it up, please.
I also request that in the next city council meeting, I may make a presentation.
Thank you.
I close my time.
Thank you very much. Okay, do you want to go first, Madam Clerk, or would you like me to go? Okay.
Okay, we received five emailed public comments. The first was from Sarah Kay, and it reads, hello, Port Wainimi City Council. Please put speed bumps throughout Bulker Park. We have numerous cars cutting through our residential neighborhood from Channel Island to Hemlock at top speed. There's been at least two accidents that I know of, one of which would likely have killed my neighbor Luis if she hadn't moved her car right before. Another occurred in the median where the palm trees are, just a few feet from where I parked my car. I'm very concerned for my elderly, disabled mother, as well as other elderly people and children that live in this neighborhood. Plus, I've been picking up dead animals from this roadway for years. Speed bumps would at least give animals more time to cross the road and avoid being hit. Thank you for listening to those of us that live on Bulker Drive. We are greatly looking forward to having a safer community. Sarah.
Thank you, and I'm going to read Abigail Milebrandt. Hello, my name is Martha Milebrandt, and I have been a resident of Port Wainimi for twenty-eight years. I have a couple of concerns, by first being the increased traffic at the crossroads at Bulker Drive and Channel Islands Boulevard. Since the opening of nearby marijuana dispensaries, I propose that the city of Port Wainimi consider adding traffic lights at the intersection of Bulker Drive and Channel Islands Boulevard. I have lived in the Bulker neighborhood for over twenty years, and since the dispensaries have opened in the last few years, the amount of time I spent waiting to cross from Bulker Drive onto Channel Islands Boulevard has increased ten to fifteen minutes. My second concern is the traffic coming through Bulker neighborhood from Channel Islands Boulevard to Hemlock Street, or vice versa. The vehicles that drive through our neighborhood have been speeding down our streets. I don't like the idea of having speed bumps on my street, but the inconvenience of adding speed bumps is nothing compared to the possibility of somebody being killed by a speeding car. My final concern is the issue of the city of Port Wainimi voting to change its name to Wainimi Beach for the sole purpose of bringing in more business. I have a problem with the city trying to change its name when the city has not yet considered the effects of increased traffic in the neighborhoods and surrounding streets by the marijuana dispensaries. I also believe that there's no reason to change our great city's name and spend two hundred thousand dollars so that tourists know that there is a beach nearby. Our city has done well enough with the name we have. If you want to draw more people into our city, I suggest the proposed budget for the name change should go towards community beach activities that benefit the city and its citizens. Thank you, Martha Milebrandt.
The next was received from Mia Mildbrandt and reads, hello, city council members. I am Mia Mildbrandt. I live on Bulker Drive in Port Wainimi and want to inform the council of the need for speed bumps around where I live. I have come to see so many people speeding in the neighborhood because it is an easy place to cross Channel Islands when there is bad traffic. There has also been accidents because of speeding. I am hoping your council members will take the initiative of putting in speed bumps on Bulker Park and Bulker Way for the safety of the community. Sincerely, Mia.
Okay, the next public comment was received from Joanne Clark, and it reads, hello all, I live at two six four six Bulker Drive. I lived in my house for twenty years. Over the years, the cars are going around the crib. It says crib, but I think she meant curb. Going around the crib faster than usually. I've had my car yet in two thousand and fifteen by some going too fast. Recently, a car came around the corner and almost hit my neighbor and her car. Please help our neighborhood by installing speed bumps to stop the fast drivers before someone in my neighborhood gets hurt. Any questions, please call or email me. Joanne J. Clark.
And the last comment was received from Cynthia Bowman, and it reads, please do not forget us here on Bulker Park. Or Bulker, sorry. We need speed bumps ASAP. And that concludes the general public comments.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to presentation number three. It's a presentation on homelessness by city council members Hernandez and Martinez. Are you ready?
Yes, we are.
All right, thank you.
We need the slide deck up. We can stay here, please.
If you'd like, if you go down there.
You're welcome to. We could go down there. We didn't talk about that, though, did we? So we need it in slide view. Okay, thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. We'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to present the report on homelessness here in Port Wainimi. This presentation will be delivered by Councilmember Hernandez and myself. And at the end of the presentation, we'd like to invite free comments from our city council members who have also took time to look at this very important issue. So Laura and myself started earlier in the year, and we found out that some of the other city council members have also found this to be an important issue. And I'd also like to thank Tara Carruth, Director of VC Continuum of Care out in Ventura County Executive Office, and James Boyd from the county's healthcare agency, who are here to answer some questions.
So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to really begin discussing the issue of homelessness in Port Wainimi. I don't think that strategically we've ever had a full discussion about how our community feels or how this council feels toward homelessness. But for me, it's an issue that hits close to home. And I would very much like to have this discussion in future meetings. I don't know how much we can discuss tonight, but hopefully by the end of the presentation, we can hear some comments and maybe get some questions asked. But what we will be doing is inviting staff to come back with a report at a future meeting, at which time we'll have more time to talk about this issue. But our objective is really to come away with a set of recommendations on the ways that the city can help the homeless. Our goal is to reduce homelessness on the streets of Port Wainimi and help more homeless individuals get the help they need.
Councilmember Hernandez and myself are very passionate about this issue, and we really care about helping the entire community. And so we decide to... And so we decided to go ahead and interview some, some subject matter experts, including Tara Carruth, James Boyd, Chief Salinas, and Kay Wilson Bolton.
We also did have an opportunity to talk to Officer Montalongo, who is the new homeless liaison officer. So we'll be sharing that information with you during the presentation.
And some of the topics in today's presentation will be our current homeless situation, such as how many homeless are actually in our city, the city response, what, what the city has done, some of the resources that are available to individuals out, out that are homeless, and also to the city itself. And then we're also going to talk about some of the next steps that we can take together as a city. So one of the first people that we interviewed was Kay Wilson Bolton, and she had a really wonderful story because it was her calling to help homelessness, and, and we really need some more leaders in our community. And I know there's a lot of leaders out there, but we're calling them to, to help us out on, on these issues because we, we can't do it alone. And...
So Kay Wilson Bolton has been helping the homeless for, I would say, over thirty years. And she's a true advocate of the homeless, and she's done some amazing things in Santa Paula. Currently, she is the executive director for the Spirit of Santa Paula, which is a 501(c)(3) that was formed in 2002. And they do a variety of programs, including outreach to the homeless. They do, they provide meals, I think, once a week, once a week or once a month, I'm not sure, but quite often. And they provide rental assistance, and they do outreach to at-risk youth. And they also were instrumental in helping stand up the One Stop Center at my church in Santa Paula. It's my family's church at El Buen Pastor United Methodist Church. And I was involved in the, in the, the standing up of that center when it first started, and it's still going today, and it's been quite successful. And it's really a good model of partnerships between the county, the city, a nonprofit, a religious institution, and, and then the Spirit of Santa Paula as well. And Kay was very instrumental in the standing up of that One Stop Center. And I think most of what we've learned from her has come from her, people like herself and, and people like Tara, who've been doing this for a long time. So this is just a picture from a few years ago when we stood up the One Stop Center at El Buen Pastor. And for those of you who don't know what the One Stop does, it's a collaboration of organizations that offer a place where the homeless can go and get a shower. They can get medical screenings and assistance. They can get snacks and clothing, fresh clothing. And it also supports basic hygiene and connects them with homeless individuals, homeless individuals with services. And as I mentioned earlier, it's a very, been a very successful program.
So when discussing our homeless population, we're going to look at some of these areas to help provide a perspective on the problem so that we can find some solutions. So such as, you know, we're going to talk about the homeless count, the public perception, obstacles to housing, the, the lack of resources that we have in space in our city, and also the Orman Beach encampments. And here are some of the stats. Some of the updated stats are that we have anywhere between, like, say, twenty-two to forty homelessness here in our city right now. They vary, and they've been varying a lot lately, but ultimately, this is about one in a thousand residents that are homeless here in our city. So it's technically not a lot of people, but it's a problem that we are, that we all care about. And it's one point two, we have one point two percent of the homeless population in the county, which is actually pretty good because our population is higher than that percent in relative to the county. So our homeless popul- problem isn't as bad as some of the other cities.
So one of the, the things that I've learned in the process of, of researching and working with Kay Wilson Bolton and the Santa Paula One Stop Center was the initial issue of dispelling myths about the homeless and gauging public perception, which can go in various directions. I usually think about two schools of thoughts when it comes to the homeless. One being, if you build it, they will come. And the other one is, if you don't build it, they'll go elsewhere, which neither offer much of a solution in terms of helping the homeless. But in our research, we found that there were other myths and perceptions about the homeless that we would like to address. One is that California's homeless are from somewhere else and have moved here for mild weather and social services. Okay, Wilson Bolton will attest to this, and the stats also attest to this. In fact, one of the statistics that I have here is, it's just kind of hard to read. It's dark here. Ninety-six percent of people who access services in 2020 while experiencing homelessness did so in only one California jurisdiction. So that supports the idea that contrary to what some people think or other theories, individuals experiencing homelessness travel around the state seeking services. So that's not really, it's not true. And number two, they're homeless because they are drug addicts and/or mentally ill. This is also a myth. In fact, the statistics also support that in reality can often be the stress and the trauma of living without a home that leads to addiction and disease, or makes it worse, that reality, makes the reality worse. The Los Angeles County study that we looked at found fifteen percent of the homeless people it surveyed reported a substance abuse disorder and twenty-seven percent a serious mental illness. So not everybody is homeless because they are either experiencing substance abuse or mentally ill. The third myth that some of us subscribe to is homelessness is a choice. And in reality, this is another frequent misconception. According to the Sacramento Housing Alliance, which advocates for supportive housing for the homeless, the reality is that homelessness is a byproduct of our broken housing market. And we'll talk about what our housing market looks like and what you need to earn in order to afford a one-bedroom in a couple of slides that we'll be coming up on in a few minutes.
And when meeting with Chief Salinas, one of the things that really resonated with me, what he said is, "It's not illegal to be homeless." And while it's not illegal, there are things that we can do to help them out. And another thing that he said is, you know, facing the community, they think it's a policing issue, but it's really a housing issue. Nonetheless, we have ordinances in place to combat issues with homelessness, such as no bicycles on the sand, no sleeping between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, no storing of personal property on the beach, no cooking on the beach unless in designated barbecue areas, and no camping at Waynemi Beach. I also want to mention that we receive up to seventy percent of our calls, anywhere between fifty to seventy percent of our calls are due to, or related to homelessness. And we also met with the, the new officer liaison, homeless liaison, Officer Montalongo. And I just want to say that he looked, he, he's the right person for the job. He, he, he was very passionate about why he applied to the position, and he was really happy that he received that position. And he told me one of the stories how, you know, a couple of months ago, he was helping an individual, and he gave him information for the, for him to go reach out and get some help. And, you know, a couple of weeks ago, some, some gentleman approached him, and he didn't recognize him at first, but he, he was telling him, "Thank you so much for helping me out, and I was able to get my life together. I have a house, I have a car, and I have, I have a job." And that's when it clicked, and he's like, "Oh, man, I, I know who this person is." He couldn't even recognize him at the time, but just so you know, some good things are on, on their way.
So we spoke about obstacles to housing, and this is just a report that we, that I pulled offline in terms of income needed to rent in Ventura County. So you can see here, if you just look at a basic one-bedroom, you'd have to make an hourly wage about, of about thirty dollars. And not very many people make that, that kind of money. I think at most, minimum wage is thirteen, maybe fifteen dollars. So clearly, an individual who does not have a partner or somebody to live with is going to end up on the streets because they can't afford the rent. And you can see the scale here of how that works. So, but this also tells us is a person must work eighty-nine hour, eighty-nine hours each week to afford a modest one-bedroom here in Ventura County. So housing's definitely an obstacle and a reason for many of the homeless in our community.
And we know we don't have a lot of space here in our, our city. It's pretty much entirely built out. We've known this for a couple of years. And so it's one of the reasons why we're looking in, in terms of collaborating with Oxnard, since they have a little bit more space, especially down Waynemi Road. There's a lot of vacant lots right there that I think would be very ideal in terms of the, the area of the population of the homeless that take place in South Oxnard and, and Port Waynemi.
So the Orman Beach encampments, you all know the problems that we've had with the Orman Beach encampments, the environmental threat that the inhabitants pose for not only the nesting areas, but just for the, the nature conservancy area that, that it is. We also have homeless coming from Orman Beach into our city to use services. So they tend to travel from Orman Beach encampments into our city using bicycles and, and transports on wheels, and Mayor Gama can attest to the environmental impact, the negative impact that these encampments have had over the years due to their, their presence. And, but with the cleanup efforts, we've been able to combat a lot of it. But, you know, every week, Mayor Gama and his team are out there, and they're still pulling trash off the beach from these encampments. So a serious problem, collaboration, more collaboration with Oxnard will certainly help. We know that Oxnard has a plan to clean that area up. I'm not real sure of the timeline, however.
And some of the things that the city has done or participated in is they've donated beds. We strengthened our ordinances, distributed backpacks, which Laura, actually Laura and Misty were both part of.
Misty was the lead on that one.
Family reunification, where they've, you know, they've gotten people together with their family. And we just added the new homeless liaison officer, who should be taking on his role soon. And we, there have been some collaborations with the county and the city of Oxnard. Our city managers, our city manager has spoken with the city manager in Oxnard. And we've done plenty of beach cleanups, right, Mayor Gama?
So while all these efforts, I think, have been good, I think what we really need is more of a strategy for the future on how we're going to work with the homeless, which is the purpose, again, the purpose of this presentation. So we, because we don't have the adequate resources here in the city, and we do the best we can, and I, we have to give credit to the two churches who provide food pantries to people who are food insecure. It is important that we recognize that there are resources at the county level through the Continuum of Care Alliance. They, the county also helps coordinate safe sleep locations in other areas of the county. The Backpack Medicine Program is an excellent program. They were here a few months ago, and we went out with them, the council member Perez, and let's see, who else was with us? Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, we went out with the officers and actually helped one individual who was willing to receive help, we put him in an ambulance, and he went to the hospital and got the help he needed. But what was interesting about the Backpack Medicine Program is that it's very resource-intensive. And we had, I, I don't know, James, how many, thank you for coming, by the way. This is James Boyd from the county. We have maybe twenty people on your team who come out to assist, and it's, it's a very involved process. These individuals come in with areas of expertise in behavioral health and drug addiction and housing. They have a veteran specialist, and whatever range of assistance you can think of, these individuals come with it. And they can be quite successful, but it's, like I said, it's very resource-intensive, and we can't always get them out here when we need them. So to continue to support that program, I think, is in our best interest so that we can build the resources that are, exist at the county, support those resources, and, and work closer with the county to make sure that we're on their, on their radar, and they're here when we need them. There's also the One Stop Centers. I think there are how many? Four or five One Stop Centers? Oh, eight? Operating seven, okay. So those are located throughout the, the county. And then there's the Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program. And as I said, food chair and food pantries also are some of the key resources that we, we use to assist our homeless. So Bobby and I put together a SWOT analysis to kind of assess our strengths, opportunities, weaknesses, and threats when it comes to homelessness. And this is where we kind of invite any council participation, or even participation from the audience, if that's allowed, in adding to this list. So in terms of strengths, we, we felt that we could have, we could be financially viable enough to contribute more to the homeless program, whether it's through the Community Benefit Fund, cannabis tax, the general fund, that we should consider using some of our funds in a strategic way to assist the homeless. We have a motivated public. There are many people out there who want to see something done. I think our council leadership is where it needs to be. Hopefully, we'll strengthen that as we go through these discussions. The resources from the county homeless programs are, are great. And we want to definitely continue to support the county in their efforts and to also participate in the Continuum of Care Program. There's also been increased state and federal funding, which is, we consider a strength, which is through Governor, Governor Newsom has really put homelessness on the top of his list, and it's been very helpful to us. As far as opportunities, we see our involvement with the VC Continuum of Care Program has a real plus and an opportunity for us to get more involved and to provide better services to the homeless here in our city. The One Stop Resources is a successful program. It's a proven program. And so we'd like to enter into some discussions, possibly about setting up a One Stop Center in conjunction with Oxnard, somewhere possibly in South Oxnard. And there's always opportunities to collaborate with our neighbors and with the county. So I think the environment is right for us to become more involved.
And on the bright side, I, I think the strengths and opportunities outweigh the weaknesses and threats, but some of the weaknesses are that we have limited resources. We only have two food pantries. We still don't have a, a big, huge community support, but I, I believe that we can find them if, you know, if we, we ask the community to help out. And there are some misperceptions about homelessness that we want to get rid of. Some of the threats are the Orman Beach encampments, which Oxnard is soon to clean up. And so there's a chance that we, we have to, you know, be careful because some of those homeless are going to come over to our beach. The lack of affordable housing, and not all homeless desire help. So that's, that's, that's probably one of the biggest problems that. And one of the things that I learned from, like, our research and talking to some of these people, these experts, is that you want to help them, and you want to be ready to help them at the time that they ask for the help. That's when we want to catch them. So it, just because they don't desire help at the time doesn't mean that on a future time, they're not going to, they're not going to want help. So that's the SWOT analysis, and we, we do have some recommendations. So I, I think it'd be really good for us to develop a strategy on addressing homelessness. Not that we're not doing a good job, because I actually think we're doing a, a really, really great job. But with that, we can allocate some funding to make sure that we can, you know, provide the necessary resources. And some of those areas of funding, we, we can get from, you know, from our cannabis sales tax, general funds, or some of the money that we, you know, we get from the port. And I think it'd, it'd be good to, to learn a little bit more about the Continuum of Care Program and, and collaborate with Ventura County.
So the other recommendation we're going to make, and I know that the city manager has been doing this already and talking to Alex McGoon, who's the city manager with the city of Oxnard, but to formally work collaboratively with the city of Oxnard in establishment of a once, a shared... But to formally work collaboratively with the city of Oxnard in establishment of a once, a shared one-stop center. So we would like to engage in those discussions with the city of Oxnard and we've had some discussions with the members of the city council who have an interest in seeing a one-stop stood up at, in South Oxnard area. We'd also like to recommend that we provide training to our police, first responders and counterstaff on how to work with the homeless. If and when we do reopen City Hall, are we open? Okay. So we're getting people, the public coming in now. I think it's really important for especially counterstaff to to know how to work with the homeless and how to assist them and, and be prepared to give them resources, a list of resources where they can get resources. And then the final recommendation is we want to direct staff to consider recommendations and return to city council with a plan to move forward.
And we just want to say thank you to everybody that helped out, elected officials, city staff, county representatives, and any, anyone else in the community that helped us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. I want to thank James Boyd and Tara Karuth, who are here today to help answer questions or correct anything that we may have said wrong.
Thank you, James and Tara. Do you have any comments for us?
Just wanted to clarify the difference between the Continuum of Care and the county. So the Continuum of Care is a true regional group that is, has a variety of stakeholders. Cities are included, local governments, but then service providers, advocates, people who've experienced homelessness themselves. And we are tasked with operating, sort of organizing and collaborated around an effective service system that covers the full geography of the county. So it is in the Continuum of Care's interest to make sure people in Port Winnie are being served. And one of the things that I have talked about that we have a countywide MOU that brings all of our city partners into participation with the Continuum of Care. And want to, you know, continue to engage with the city around participating in that MOU and that partnership. So thank you.
I, I understand, is that, are we the only city that's not?
You are not. There are still three cities that haven't signed on and all three are sort of reconvening around those conversations.
Which, which are the three cities right now?
The three cities that have not yet signed on are Camarillo, Port Winnie and Ojai. And they're all, Camarillo and Ojai are working on bringing it to their councils.
And how, how would we benefit from signing?
So the MOU really is about, it's, it's sort of a handshake that we're all in this together, that this is a regional challenge. And there are a number of things that, that the city commits to. Commits to participate in the Continuum of Care, which gives you a voice at the table around funding recommendations, policies and programs. An opportunity to really advocate that resources are coming to the city. It, it commits the city that if you are making funding, that you are making funding recommendations for housing or homeless services, that you consult with the Continuum of Care. So we make sure we're all utilizing our resources most effectively. And then if you are funding programs and services, it asks that you have them participate in our, using the homeless management information system, which is a client-level database that all of our providers use. So that they can coordinate care and, and document what services and then participate in the coordinated entry system.
And it's not going to cost us any money, right?
That's correct. It does not cost any money to participate. Or to sign on to the MOU. And ultimately it does, it does ask that each city have their own crisis response system. And we understand that for smaller cities, that it probably doesn't make sense to have a permanent year-round shelter in the city of Port Winnie. But having resources and services that connect people to shelter and housing are certainly things that people need. So it doesn't commit you to everybody has to create the same thing, but you know, create a response that works for your city's constituents.
So the issue closest to home that, you know, we're all recognizing is over at the Ormond Beach, the El Helico area. What has been your experience as far as reaching out to them and finding places for them to be, other than there?
So the biggest, honestly, the biggest challenge we are experiencing right now is that our shelter programs are full. We have more people sheltered in Ventura County than we have had before. Congregate shelters are still following reduced capacity and safe protocol because COVID is still a risk in those congregate facilities. So we're still using motel or non-congregate shelter placements. And so the challenge is having enough housing resources that we can move people through shelter into housing to win. So then we have vacant places that we can do, reach out to encampments and bring people into shelter and housing programs. So it's really this sort of logjam right now where we have everybody that's in shelter and they're not moving out to housing. And that reduces the capacity to serve more unsheltered people.
In an ideal world, can you maybe describe what congregate shelter is to you or to us?
So congregate shelter, if you imagine what the Oxnard shelter looks like, right? It's a big, open space with dormitory or bunk beds. So non-congregate is like your own individual room, like a motel. And so in a congregate setting, most of those shelters have had to reduce their capacity. Sometimes by half because the space needs to allow for distancing. Because people are sharing that space.
So in your talks with, I guess, probably a lot with the city of Oxnard. Where have they identified locations in an ideal world where they would develop these congregate shelters that are needed?
So Oxnard has a proposal right now to build a shelter and housing facility in downtown Oxnard. They're currently using the old armory building that's owned by the city for that, for that facility. They're not looking to build more congregate shelter that I know of. They're really focused on creating more housing opportunities and focusing on having that shelter be the primary shelter site within the city.
So one of the issues I think I heard last year when the presentation was made that with all housing, there's basic rules and there, I guess there's two different theories on how to deal with it. One is that you provide congregate housing with minimal rules. And that, you know, because, you know, a lot of the people have different types of habits that may be antisocial or, you know, different addictions and things like that. And a lot of the different housing shelters don't allow that, or right now. And so then there's another thing where you provide some kind of shelter where like the rules are very relaxed. And that, you know, it's better to keep them there than I, have them stay there than being out in the fields.
Yeah. So almost all of our publicly funded shelter and housing programs are required by federal and state funding to follow what's called a housing-first approach. And that means that you don't have any significant additional rules than any of the rest of us would have in lease agreements or programs. So you're not requiring people participate in treatment. You're not requiring that they are absolutely sober. But most of our programs do say you cannot use, you cannot drink or use drugs on-site. And are working with them on services that if they, you know, fall out of treatment with their behavioral health or they're struggling with, you know, behavioral challenges that are causing problems, that, that we're offering services to help address that, to focus on keeping them housed or sheltered with the goal to not send people back out to the streets because of rule violations. However, when it comes to safety concerns, you know, violent outbursts, sometimes somebody has to leave a program and we try to still engage people in services and find ways to bring them back into the program safely. But for the most part, it is requiring as few extra rules as possible so that people do want to come into the program and get the services they need.
Councilman Hernandez said, you know, there's a lot of misnomers as far as why people are homeless. Have they done any statistics, say, in this particular area as to how many of them are homeless because, you know, they had a bad lot in life, lost their job, you know, you have family situation versus you know, for whatever reason, be it their father or other been on some kind of addiction and maybe don't have a clear mind to get back into the flow of society.
Yeah. So I would argue that it's both. That a lot of times the bad lot in life or a traumatic event sometimes leads to, you know, spiraling mental health and addiction-related issues. We, every year when we do our homeless count, which we did not do the unsheltered count in 2020 because of COVID. We do ask about the reasons people become homeless and the service needs they have. And almost always, a large percentage of people are experiencing family challenges. Or a loss of income. I mean, we have a lot of seniors right now that are experiencing homelessness because the person they were living with died, whether that was a spouse or someone else. And now on a single income, they can't afford housing. So it's not just people with mental illness and substance use, but absolutely that is a component that comes into play when, when we're talking about homelessness.
What we did was we used the homeless data integration system. It's a statewide system for gathering statistics. And I didn't share those with you, but I think, okay, among people experiencing homelessness who access services in 2020, forty-one percent reported a disabling condition. Nine percent were veterans, seventeen percent reported experiences with domestic violence. And twenty-two were under the age of eighteen. But that's a good source for stats. If you are, are you interested and you want to look at that system, it's online.
Yeah, that data actually is fed from all of our local systems. At the Continuum of Care level, we share that data with the state to create that rich data source. It's fairly new and it's very helpful.
I guess one concern I had, and maybe Chief Salinas can address it. I remember a couple of years ago, we had a presentation. And I think you identified at that point in time, we had about seventeen identifiable homeless. And then I just recently heard that now we have what, twenty-five to forty?
Well, that was based at that
It was two nineteen, the two eighteen count and then it went up to two thousand nine.
But that's just adjusted in time. What was the term you used?
It's a point in time.
Point in time.
So it's a snapshot of one day of homelessness within the county. When we look at our annual data, you know, some people experience homelessness long-term and other peoples have very short episodes. Nationally, they estimate that over the course of the year, you'll likely have three to four times that many people that may experience homelessness. Whether that's, our goal is always that it's a very brief time if possible. But if we don't have the housing and other resources, sometimes it goes on much longer.
No, I've always been concerned. It's, it's great to say you can't be here, you can't be here, but you have to find a place for the, for people to be. And I think what you're addressing is there's none, so if we were to go to Ormond Beach, again, our closest place, and we had places for them to go. Do you think, what percentage do you think would take advantage of that opportunity?
Yeah, we've been having some interesting recent efforts around this. Many of you may have seen, you know, the county is working on the Santa Clara River Task Force right now. And trying to learn from that, which may be replicated in other areas. And Oxnard has also been doing a lot of outreach. So we did a recent survey to ask, so almost everyone that we surveyed said that they were interested in an alternative place to stay. We offered, you know, said, okay, if we had motels, if we had congregate shelter, if we had safe camping, any of these options. Almost everybody responded positively. Now, in full transparency, we did not talk about rules and expectations. We just said, hey, if we had this to offer, would you be willing to accept it? And it was over seventy-five percent at that time that said, yes. If you had a placement, we would absolutely take it. I do think that homeless people who've been unsheltered have had a much lower incidence of COVID. So they are fearful. They know that congregate shelters have had outbreaks. And so almost all of those folks said they would prefer a motel room. But they were absolutely open to that. Now, when we go back and start talking about rules and expectations and those things, we'll have more to learn from there. But yes, I think James will tell you too, and they're doing outreach. Almost always the number one thing is people are asking for a place to stay.
I know one of the concepts that you brought up, the safe camping. Has, have, have the county or you or combination like, and I've seen the Santa Clara one and stuff, have they begun to try to ident, I mean, we, well, Port Winnie has very little available space. We have vast amounts of space for agriculture and stuff like that. Have they reached out to any of those farmlands to be able to locate places that you could have safe camping, but then still easy access? You know, when you need safety and easy access to like the one-stop continuums and things like that for them to go. Has there been any success or?
There's one program in Ventura County that is a sanctioned encampment. And it has evolved over the years to where they're now sort of tiny home structures and that's Turning Point Foundation's River Haven Program. That's the only formalized sort of encampment and it has changed from, you know, truly tents and then it was geodesic domes. And now it's tough sheds. And they have, a one-stop is now out of that location and have portable bathrooms. And so that is one successful model. And we're still exploring other opportunities for that kind of resource.
I know. I went out there and they even provided job opportunities. They were willing to wash my car when, when I went there and visited them, you know. So I mean, I, I'm familiar with that. Is that the county has, has that been accepted? That's in the city of Ventura, right?
Yeah. So the River Haven Project is in the city of Ventura and has been there since the it was before my time in Ventura County, since flooding in the nineties, I believe.
That was oper, it's operated out of Turning Point, right?
Yes, yes.
Well, thank you so much Tara. We're gonna have to stop because this was just to be a presentation.
Councilwoman Perez, do you have any comments?
I didn't have a comment. I had a question about how do we get a regular rotation of the Backpack Medicine back in Winnie?
Come on up, James.
Well, the only issue with Backpack Medicine is it's county-wide. So we, we try to go to every city in the county. So if there's a, if there's an issue in Port Winnie, Chief Salinas will reach out to me or or Laura, someone will let me know that we have a big issue here and we try to come out here. But it, we just, we're just so small of a group as far as the, like my team is so small. We have all the stakeholders are coming in, but the program is so small that we just can't be in two different places at once. But I'm hoping to grow that within the next year or two, so we can have multiple days, so I can be in different, different cities to have more access for Backpack Medicine.
I'm sorry.
What do you need to grow it, the program?
Employees. So a lot more staff. So we need a lot more staffing.
Do you have the funding necessary for more staffing?
Well, our program, we're HERSA-funded. So the, the program we're called is the Home Healthcare for the Homeless. So Healthcare for the Homeless is HERSA-funded. So that funding is, that's we fund the one-stop program, that kind of thing. So we added on Backpack Medicine. And so we started as just a one-day, a Monday a week to provide outreach to the homeless in the county. The problem with that is it's not funded. The doctors don't get paid. A lot of volunteers that come out, that most of them are come from other agencies, so they get paid. But trying to make it bigger, you know, we'll just have to have more staff involved to be able to have someone to manage each group. to be able to have someone to manage each group. Like, I manage each group, so when I go out, I'm with the group to make sure that we're making contact with each individual, and that we're providing the services that they need.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I had just one more. Where, where's the closest one? Because I went to the One Stop that was in, I think it was Danapala. And where's the closest one nearby us?
So the closest one would be on Richmond, I mean, not Richmond, Sixth and Nita. So we're a rescue mission, so we have one there every Wednesday.
We did visit that one as well, but we couldn't really take pictures, so we didn't have any photos to show you.
I was quite impressed by the multitude of services, at least that were offered, and I was kind of observing what ones they took advantage of most. I mean, things like showers and, you know, clothing and some basic food. I was just wondering, within South Ox, I guess the key thing then is, has the city of Oxnard identified a location where they could do their One Stop, be it once a week, or, I think it was once a week.
Well, as I said in my presentation, they are considering, and I'll let you go, sorry. Well, they, they want a place in South Oxnard. I don't know if they specifically have identified a location, so maybe Councilwoman Perez knows more on that?
No, there's nothing.
So we are working closely with the city of Oxnard to identify a place in South Oxnard, and so we can have that partnership with Port Huaynimi and the city of Oxnard, so we can provide services on this end. Because we do realize there is that huge need here, and we want to try to get it here. It's just identifying a location that's suitable. And so once we figure that out, then we'll be able to drive forward.
That'd be awesome.
Now, we're still trying to identify.
That'd be awesome, yeah.
So I just have one quick comment. How, how did you come to the conclusion that there's lack of community support? Because my experience in our community in and around this area, I can only speak to where I live, is that in my neighborhood, we all reach out to the local homeless people that become known. We help, we share things, we communicate with them. And I know of some great stories over the past twenty-five years in, in doing that. And there's this woman, Janet, who we call the Model Homeless Citizen. Unfortunately, I think she's in the hospital right now with a grave medical condition. But for twenty-five years, we've, I've seen this lady every day, offered her help when I can, and I know David has, and many people in our community have. So I think our community is very, very aware and willing to help if help is, is being accepted or people are trying to help themselves.
Mayor Gama, excuse me, I just wanted to say, maybe the better way to describe it is that the feelings are not uniform across the board. When you talk about a population of what, twenty-one thousand people here in the city of Port Huaynimi, not everybody feels the same about homelessness, which is one of the reasons we wanted, I wanted to make this public, wanted to, and have a discussion on it, so that we can hopefully gain and socialize, gain support and socialize this issue among our residents. So we can get more support.
And I don't think this question was directed to James, I think it was directed to us, but I guess my way of answering that is, we lack a community leader like Kay, Kay Wilson. You know, now, we're not saying that we don't have people that are interested, but we're, we're basically, well, what we're calling out, you know, we want some of the leaders to come up and step, step up and actually, you know, you know, help push this, you know, and that's, that's all, that's all it is. It's not saying that the community's not helping.
And then one of the areas that I think is always a problem is like boundaries, establishing boundaries, like, okay, are you willing to accept help? And so where do we draw the boundaries? And if somebody is unwilling to get help, do we just let them sleep in front of a business's front door or do the things that we see? I mean, so that's, you know, that's something, again, that would be very difficult for us to establish. Like, how do we establish boundaries? We know that's very difficult. But I really appreciate this. I think there's a lot to be discussed and a lot for us to do. And I don't know exactly, yes, Councilmember Perez?
I have a question for staff. One of the homeless issues was brought to my attention and asked for assistance in identifying how to get help for veterans who needed homeless. And I reached out to Tara, who provided me information about the VASH program and what was necessary in order to do that. And I don't know what happened with that. I sent that information to our housing director.
Yeah, the, the program that you referenced is, is being reviewed, investigated. It's been reviewed several times in the past and opted out because some of the, the requirements didn't necessarily match with, with, with our configuration here in the city. So I've asked Ms. Pesuwa to look at it again and, and see if it's appropriate now.
Yeah, in fact, one last comment is that we, we talked about a gentleman that Councilmember Hernandez and I have been trying to help in our community, who was in the Vagabond Hotel and who did get kicked out because of his mental illness. And so there's like, there's that, you know, how do you, I mean, it's, you know, you have a guy that's, that's accepting help, he's, he's got mental illness, and he hears voices, and then he acts inappropriately, and then he gets kicked out. And now he's been on our street for now a year and a half, and we can't seem to help him.
I'd just briefly say that we've been through several iterations of Project Home Key, which is the non-congregate shelter for high-risk individuals who are homeless. And one of the challenges, and I don't know this particular individual's specifics and which location, but right now, we're using motel vouchers with private motels for the most part, except for the property in Oxnard that is now operated by Mercy House under the, under Project Home Key. But when we are dealing with private motel owners, they, they have a lower tolerance for some of the behavior challenges. And so that's one of the, the challenges that we're continuously navigating. So it, it is an unfortunate situation when we don't have control over the housing resources, and ultimately, the private owner gets to choose whether.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for all the time. Appreciate it.
And now I guess we'll look to staff down the road to bring this back on the future agenda.
Yes, that's our request, or one of our recommendations. Do we need a motion or?
It would be, it would be appropriate at the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, we'll do that? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, James and Tara, for being here tonight. Take care.
Okay, moving on to presentation number four. I'm going to read a proclamation recognizing the twentieth anniversary of September eleventh. Whereas on September eleventh, two thousand and one, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in our nation's history and did so with courage and bravery. And whereas in the response to this tragedy, Americans across the country united together in a remarkable spirit of devotion and unity and carried out countless acts of heroism. And whereas, September eleventh is a day to honor the memory of those who perished and those who united together in response to the tragedy, including countless first responders and volunteers. And whereas, September eleventh is observed and recognized as an annual National Day of Service and Remembrance. And whereas, on September eleventh, including the days leading up to and following this tragic day, citizens have an opportunity to participate in activities that honor nine-eleven victims and heroes by joining together and remembering them. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of Port Huaynimi hereby recognizes and honors the twentieth anniversary of September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, appreciates the courage and bravery of those first responders and volunteers, encourages the community to remember those who lost their lives. Thank you. Now, we're gonna move on to presentation number five. Crime and Community Update by our Chief of Police, Andrew Salinas.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, I'm here to provide you with a community and crime update. Hopefully, that comes out a lot better, because I cannot read that at all.
It looks like we need a new projector.
I can read it. I can't see it behind me.
There's snow.
Yeah, it's different on our screen.
Yeah.
There's snow.
It's not gonna work.
It looks good on this screen. I can open it on my laptop.
The problem is, chief, we can all see.
Curtis, to the rescue.
You darken it?
Yeah, I think we just need a new projector.
We'll put it on the budget for next year.
Yeah, but maybe the brightness on it is, is up, is that something that we can change remotely?
Yeah, let's see, try.
I can see that part.
That helps a little bit, yeah. Is that a little blurry?
Yeah, it's a little blurry.
You can, good, because I thought I needed glasses.
At that time, for reading glasses, then. Yep.
Do you want me to bring it up on my laptop and put it in front of you?
Will your laptop?
That's the young guy.
I can bring it up and unplug it, and you can just scroll through.
Okay.
Where do you have it stored? It's not in the presentation. It's not in the presentation folder. He didn't put it in there.
Can you, want to maybe just present from up here?
I'll just do my best in reading the numbers here.
I don't know where you have it, where you pulled it from.
All right, we'll, we'll move on. Okay, so the first part of my presentation is a crime update, and so I do have a lot of good news to share with everyone. The statistics you see up, up there are, for the first six months of two thousand and twenty, where as you can see, we had two hundred and twenty property crimes in the first half of two thousand and twenty, and twenty-two violent crimes for the first half of that year, for a total of two hundred and forty-four, two hundred and forty-two total crimes. Now, as, yeah, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't read that. So I'm gonna, so I'm gonna just summarize real quick, and everyone can see it on the screen. To just provide you the good news is that crime is down thirty percent. A property crime is down thirty percent in the city of Port Huaynimi as compared to two thousand and twenty. And two thousand and twenty was already a down year, and that accounts now for a total twenty-four percent crime reduction for two thousand and twenty-one, which is great news. We have fifty-six fewer crimes in the first half of two thousand and twenty-one as compared to two thousand and twenty. One of the things I count for is, if I go back here, if you see in two thousand and twenty, the property crime, when COVID started, and we, April, May, June, there you go, April, May, June, you can see how high our property crime rate was. It was forty-eight, forty-eight, forty-two roughly. But as you move forward, you can see how that jumps down, down into the twenties, and that accounts for almost sixty fewer property crimes this year. So that has been the biggest contributor in terms of crime decrease. Another statistic that you see there, April, we had eight violent crimes. Seven of that was just in one incident. The individual that plowed down the bicyclist, there were seven bicyclists total. That accounts for seven assault with a deadly weapons, six assault with a deadly weapons, and one homicide. So if you subtract those seven crimes from the twenty-nine, we're actually at the same level that we were back in two thousand and twenty. So again, that one incident accounted for seven violent counts. So that's the good news in terms of crime in Port Huaynimi. We are doing great. Quality of life issues seem to be our driving force in terms of calls for service as they relate to the homeless, things like dogs on the sand, traffic speeders, loud mufflers, subjects disturbing, those are the calls that are dominating our patrol response on a daily basis. So I showed this slide my last presentation back in May. We had a team, Team Port Huaynimi, that helped raise funds for NAMI. At that time, we were in second place with about four thousand dollars raised. I am proud to announce, by the time that we concluded this fundraiser, we had raised over twelve thousand dollars. We were the top city, actually, top fundraiser in the entire county, including beating Oxnard, who's the biggest city.
Oh, right.
And so we had team captains that are up there on the dais right now, Mayor Gama and our co-chair, Misty, who helped fundraise money as well. And so that is something I'm, I'm very proud of, and that we did a great job of setting an example for the rest of our county, even though we are the smallest city in the county. And so with that, we're gonna be recognized with a, a number of other individuals on this date, so I invite everyone to join us. I wish I could read that, I can't, but I know sometime in October.
October fourth, five p.m.
Yes, you have to buy tickets for it. I think it's only like a few dollars for tickets, but I invite everyone to attend. I plan, I've already bought my tickets, and I plan on.
Where's it gonna be?
County Park, Camarillo County Park, I believe. Yeah, it's not too far from here, so I invite everyone to attend if possible.
I'd like to add that we raised over a hundred thousand dollars for that.
Yes, county-wide, we raised over a hundred thousand dollars with twelve thousand of that coming from the city of Port Huaynimi. Moving on, as you know, we had our all-hands promotional ceremony in June at the Ocean View Pavilion. That is our department photo that we took on that day. And we recognized quite a few officers. I thank everyone that was here for actually being there, including our city attorney. Actually, everyone up on the dais was up there to celebrate that with us. This was the first time we'd actually done that in many, many years. So again, thank you. We had the Huaynimi Beach Car Show on Sunday, June twenty-seventh. You can see our cool little awards there, which garnered a lot of praise. It's something different than your standard tall trophies that you get. Now, that's like one of the highly sought-out awards that people are looking forward to in the years to come. We saw roughly three thousand people at this event. It was a complete success. We had almost three hundred car entries. We had food vendors, sale vendors, and we had a DJ and live entertainment there for our crowds and for being the first event back in almost two years. We really did a good job, and the police explorers should be credited for putting together such a great event. Fireworks. So since my last presentation, we've had the Fourth of July. We still struggle as a community to deal with the number of fireworks calls that we get. This image that you see right there, that we posted on Facebook, is actually the most shared and most liked or disliked image so far this year. It's a very powerful image. It made an impact on many people out there. Unfortunately, we didn't see a lower number in terms of calls for service. We cited about a dozen people this year for fireworks violations. The Fourth of July continues to be our busiest year in terms of calls for service. It is an all-hands-on-deck. Nearly every single officer works on that evening, including myself. And so perhaps having a firework show at the pier or on the beach or off a barge will potentially lower our calls for service, because people will actually have a firework show to go to, and they don't feel like they have to entertain or buy fireworks for the, to entertain their children. Oxnard did not have a firework show this year. I don't know that Camarillo had one. I know there was one in Moore Park, so that's something that we should look at here in the coming months as people start to plan, you know, six to nine months in advance for their firework shows.
I believe our city manager was starting to look into that as to what we need to do to get our own firework show here.
That is, that is correct. We've done some preliminary investigative work with the fire departments and seeing what we need to do specifically to address it as a, as a pure central launch, launch site. I don't have any updates, though, Councilwoman Perez.
So on August thirty-first, the El Dorado County Sheriff's Department asked for assistance from the tri-counties to assist them with the Caldo fires. The sheriff's department sent forty people, Oxnard sent ten people, Simi Valley fifteen, and we sent a couple of officers ourselves. Here are some pictures from that deployment. In fact, I believe they are coming back tonight or sometime tomorrow, as they've already been out on a seven-day deployment. Any overtime accumulated as a result of this deployment, whether it be the officers that actually went out and worked or the, the backfill overtime that required to. or the, the backfill overtime that required to, uh, cover their positions is completely reimbursable, uh, since they have claimed this area, uh, natural disaster area, state of emergency. Uh, so we'll be, uh, receiving reimbursement funds for all this overtime through, uh, Cal O E S. So let's talk about the Beach Festival. I think it was a complete success, um, the feedback that we're getting, uh, we're getting a lot more positive feedback than negative feedback. I actually haven't heard anything too negative, other than the one incident, uh, where I received an email about a, a lady who was not allowed access with her service dog. Uh, but other than that, I've received nothing but positive comments. Um, I do have a video to play that our P I O put together for us. Before I get into it, can you first play that?
Kinda cool on our NAMI fundraising, uh, aligns to our strategic pillar of small city doing big things.
Yes, very true, very true.
That's really nice.
See the list there, but, uh, that, uh, we were able to donate quite a bit of money as well to these organizations. A lot of these organizations assisted us with picking up the trash, parking cars, uh, cleaning tables, uh, so on and so forth. So I bring up this picture here because as we talk about our successes and actually expanding the event, there's this opportunity to use this area here, uh, and develop it before next year. I do know the city manager is looking, uh, into this area to have it developed as well, but I just wanted to bring that up during this presentation because, uh, we're gonna be looking for area to expand, uh, we're gonna be looking for areas to park vehicles. Uh, that became a problem this year, and so, uh, that seems to be the more, most appropriate area, uh, which will actually allow us to expand our event area, uh, for a number of other events, uh, that may be coming to Port Wainimi as people have kinda seen the type of festival that we can put together or the capabilities, uh, of our beachfront. So, uh, that's something I wanted to point out to city council as well. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of you for being there, uh, for participating, for volunteering, whether it was, uh, serving alcohol, uh, whether it was being in the dunk tank or, or just being there, uh, that was very helpful. Our own city manager, uh, was up Sunday night with me, um, cleaning up till about eleven o'clock at night. Uh, so that says a lot about our city manager as well, he's, he was out there putting in the, the long hours. Uh, and then our public works department, uh, amazing team, very flexible and adaptable, uh, whether it was Stephen Elmkrantz especially, Charles Cable, Rick Cervantes, uh, whenever we needed something at a moment's notice, uh, they responded and helped, helped us make this a successful event. Some people thought this was gonna be a super-spreader event, uh, and I, it was not. Uh, and I think a lot of that, uh, was a result of, uh, the mitigating measures that we put forth, uh, to address those, uh, and, and encouraging people if they were not vaccinated to be wearing masks. We gave out free hand sanitizer at the gate, uh, there was plenty of hand sanitizer stations around the event, and we were regularly cleaning up, uh, common areas. Now, in terms of total budget, uh, it appears that, uh, we are gonna be about fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars in the red. Uh, a lot of that was as a result of a shortfall of parking revenue. We sold out in parking by about one o'clock, which meant people were parking farther away. We weren't able to charge the ten dollars we were hoping to get, so we, we felt we came up about a thousand vehicles short, uh, between the both, both days, which accounts for about ten thousand dollars. Being that it was our first year, we didn't have very much data, uh, our vendor prices were very, very low because we wanted to attract people, same with some of our sponsorship packages that were negotiated. Uh, but now that we have this, uh, year to use a founda, as a foundation for future years, uh, we believe, uh, that, that will no longer be the case in terms of being in the red, especially since, um, in that first year, you have to buy initial signage, uh, there's a lot of things you have to buy, um, in your first year. So, um, we have that stuff now, and those, those expenses won't, uh, be necessary in the second and following years. Uh, so things that we're gonna do to address parking are gonna, we're gonna have a more vast shuttle system, uh, find other lots such as the community center and the library, uh, even the empty lot at Wainimi and Perkins. Actually get into those negotiations, uh, with the city of Oxnard, Channel Islands Harbor, uh, to secure off-site parking, uh, because as we get bigger, uh, people are gonna, more people are gonna be coming to our event, especially as COVID hopefully goes away. Let's see here, so because we had a successful event, uh, we're coming up with this new idea of now having Wainimi Beach Fest Days. Uh, these are the weekends leading up to the Wainimi Beach Festival. Uh, it will be kicked off with a, a pickleball tournament the first weekend in August, uh, with the following weekend being a cornhole tournament, and then the following weekend after that being a beach volleyball tournament. Uh, and then, then concludes with a Friday night concert, uh, there at the event site, uh, the day before the event, and we're gonna call this Wainimi Beach Fest Days. Uh, this is just our newest idea, uh, and we're gonna see if we can actually, uh, pull this off. But, given that we've had a successful car show and now a successful, uh, Wainimi Beach Festival, we think that we're a serious player now, and people, when they hear about an event happening in Port Wainimi, uh, they are actually gonna come out here because they know that we put together a, a pretty good event. And so we're hoping that, uh, these events will be just as successful.
I think we should add one more event to start off that Beach Fest Days, maybe a parade.
Be nice to have a parade.
Yes, we could have a beach parade.
And a surf contest.
And a surf, yes. Uh, the challenges of the surf contest is making sure that we have the tide and the waves that will come in and.
You just do it.
You just do it?
You just, I've surfed in many contests, but the, yeah, it's sometimes the littler waves, you, you can't predict it, so you just do it. But yeah, it would be great, I think that's a good idea.
So, uh, wanted to let everyone know some of the upcoming holiday events and to save the dates, and that's our tree lighting ceremony on Tuesday, November thirtieth. Uh, our senior holiday luncheon is always the first Tuesday in December. Uh, we don't know if we are going to have that yet, uh, given our current, uh, COVID condition, but at least put that in your calendar, uh, so you know it's there, and then we still plan on having a Cops for Tops event on Saturday, December eighteenth. It is planned for the community center, uh, but we will have an alternate outdoor site at the beach again, uh, if need be. So, actually here are the pictures that actually go along with those events. So, if any, that concludes my presentation, if anyone has any questions, that'd be more than happy to answer.
I have a comment, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, um, also give recognition to the police explorers who spent grueling days starting early in the morning and parking with those cars all day long and standing out in the sun. Frank and Henry Matulanga do such a great job with them. I'm impressed with my own daughter who, who volunteers and just fourteen and gets out there and does it for free, and it's, it's a great program.
I actually failed to give props to my own police department, um, I hope they're not watching. Uh, but, uh, this was an all-hands-on-deck for the police department as well. Uh, I don't think there's a single police officer that didn't work this event, very similar to the Fourth of July, uh, for both days. Um, as you can tell by the amount of traffic, uh, that comes in as well as, uh, onsite security, uh, having a command post for an event this size, uh, it required everyone, uh, to be working. So, uh, I should be very thankful for them, for them being out there and, and helping make this a successful event, sorry.
I had a couple of comments too.
Go ahead.
Thank you, um, thank you, chief, for excellent presentation and, uh, recapping the, uh, festival, um, Wainimi Beach Festival. I wasn't able to attend, but I do, did appreciate all the footage and the coverage on Facebook, and, um, that was, it was fun to watch. I had a question about September eleventh and was wondering if anything was being planned for the twentieth anniversary. Are we doing anything with the fire department this year like we've done in previous years?
I, I will have Commander Albertson follow up with the fire department. Typically, uh, they do something on nine eleven at a particular time, uh, and so, uh, we typically go out there uh, in numbers to, uh, support them, yes.
Okay, if you could let us know, so we can attend as well, it's on a Saturday, I under, it's Saturday. Okay, oh, and then I wanted to know, what was the outcome of the, um, uh, the individual with the service dog? What was the situation there, just?
Uh, she had a service dog, uh, who, um, she had a service dog because she suffered from PTSD. Uh, when we gave instructions at the beginning of Saturday, we told, uh, people that no emotional support animals were allowed uh, into the event, uh, and so that got lost in translation, and so she was denied access. Uh, we had that corrected by Saturday afternoon, uh, and Sunday, uh, we had no issues. I got the email from her on Sunday or Saturday night, uh, I replied to her, and she and I have been in talks, and, uh, we are correcting the situation.
Okay, because I understand under ADA, uh, emotional support animals are not, um, allowed, allowed.
They're not allowed, uh, so they're just kinda finding that fine line. I, I forecasted we were gonna have this situation, uh, and it happened. Uh, people are very passionate about their dog, and so, uh, we dealt with it as best as we could.
Councilmember Perez, do you have any comments or questions? Councilmember Martinez.
In terms of the parking, we were able to park at the port, right?
Yes, sir.
But we just needed more space.
Yeah, we were able to park about two hundred or two hundred and twenty-five cars at the port. In a perfect scenario, if we had that entire lot, we would've been able to park a thousand cars in there.
Maybe we can work on that for the next time. Mayor Pro-Tam Rollins, comments, questions?
Yeah, just, I, I just wanna thank the entire city staff as far as like the, the high degree of organization, the high degree of representing our city to the outsiders. I think everybody that I talked to, that I invited, said nothing but really good things about like the whole experience. So kudos to you all for, you know, working together as a team that I, I, I truly appreciate that. The, um, and then also the fact that we had forty-eight people vaccinated, I know that came up as a last-minute idea, you know, within the last two or three weeks, so I'm glad that we're able to follow through with that because that makes us a safer community. On a side note, I was just looking at, uh, as far as your, the ideas, as far as like, you know, the, uh, making it a month-long thing. I think we can be proud of our city, and I think by bringing in these events, I think it's a sense of positive tourism that I think we wanna kinda develop and move forward. Just real quickly, can you give any update on one of the traditional things we've had, the movies in the park? As far as like, how, what we've done to this point and what we plan to do for the rest of the year?
I do know we have, uh, movies in the park scheduled for this Friday, uh, at the beach. Uh, the movie they are going to show is Jumanji, and then there's another movie scheduled two weeks after that, Cruella, uh, so that we are going to, uh, restart, uh, the movies in the park program, uh, beginning this week.
And, and I guess my, um, how, how do we, um, get the word out to the people right now?
Uh, right now, we are using the Facebook social media platform to get the word out. Uh, I'm not aware of anything, it's actually posted on our city website or not. I'm not, I'm not involved with that process.
Okay.
But I know that's how I've been able to figure out, and that's through Facebook.
Okay.
Yes, I, um, I just wanna say that I think, um, our residents and all our guests behaved beautifully over the Wainimi Beach Festival, and it was interesting because on the very first day, I didn't see any dogs. And then on Sunday, I saw all kinds of dogs, golden retriever, big dogs, little dogs, there was dogs everywhere, so, um, I don't know, I think dogs are cool, it's hard to dislike a dog, so hopefully we could, uh, be more welcoming to our furry friends, um, and then I was hoping that at some point, we could have a debrief by the numbers so that we could, as a council, understand like the dynamics of what went on and the parking issue, and maybe we could have a presentation where we could all participate and share our ideas for improvement. Clearly, if we get that large lot at the port, then that would pretty much solve our problem. So the question is if we could get in advance and get an agreement with them, perhaps we'll take it up at our, our meeting coming up in the next couple of days for the community benefit. Um, but, uh, I think it was wonderful to see, um, Wainimi Beach Festival back. I absolutely love the Ferris wheel, I think we should have a Ferris wheel year-round somewhere. I think it was just beautiful, and, uh, I really liked the way it actually looked like the county fair. It was awesome, so thank you to everybody that helped. Really love the fact that, uh, the Sea Cadets were out there with Reach Wainimi Beach buckets because that was, we canceled our Wainimi Beach cleanup, but our buckets were in good use the entire weekend, so that was awesome. Um, yeah, it was just a great day, uh, people were well-behaved. I was really impressed with the lack of cigarette smoking, I thought that was gonna be a big problem for us, and it wasn't. Um, I think I saw maybe one person lighting up a cigarette, and so I felt that was amazing. So, thank you for all your hard work slash, and, uh.
With that, I'd like to actually make note of those that were on the committee, uh, so people at home can hear those names. And, you know, we couldn't have done this without Marty Lieberman, our festival director, uh, Steve Kinney, uh, David Moss, uh, Sandy Montez, uh, as well as, uh, Kelly Surly and her, her group. Uh, and then, uh, council member Bobby Martinez and Rich Rollins came on there in the last month to, uh, give us some guidance as well. Uh, so with that, without all those. So without, without all those individuals, this would not have been possible.
And Donna, Donna Breeze, was she part of the committee?
She was not a part of the committee. She was part of, she was assigned to the Sandcastle. Competition.
Yeah, and I absolutely loved the interaction and the combination of Reach in Recreation, Education, Arts and Culture in Waenimi. I think that was amazing. And I think getting their name out is, is very positive for our city. And yeah, it was just a great two days.
And I don't know if anyone saw, we also made the most popular morning news broadcast on KTLA for nine o'clock and 10 o'clock on that Sunday. They came out, did a few news segments, did a piece on the Waenimi Beach Festival. So that, that went really nice.
Yes.
I was serving beer pretty much all day on Sunday. So I had a lot of interaction with a lot of different people who didn't even know there was a festival in town and just somehow ended up in our beach area and saw the festival and came in and spent the whole day and, and thought it was the best thing that they'd ever seen. Some people, a lot of people didn't even know we had a beach.
Yeah, and then I learned something too. I kept seeing all these pizza boxes walking around like, where are they getting pizza? And it turns out it was a taco pizza. It was pretty cool.
And the price was right. It was free to get in.
Yeah. So thank you. Are there any more comments, questions or comments? Thank you, Chief. We are going to move on to the consent calendar. Item number six, we're going to approve the minutes of the city council for the following meetings. Regular meeting of July 19th, 2021, special closed session meeting of August 5th, 2021, and special budget workshop of August 9th, 2021, and special budget adoption meeting of August 16th, 2021. The recommendation is to approve the minutes. Item number seven, receive and file the finance cash disbursements from July 13th, 2021 through August 29th, 2021. The recommendation is to receive and file the disbursements. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Shall we just do a vote? Do we have to do a roll call vote anymore?
We should for discussion items. We don't necessarily for this. It's good protocol, but it's up to you, sir.
Okay, we could do a, all in favor, say?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now that we got the consent calendar taken care of, we're moving on to public hearings. The annual development agreement compliance review. This hearing is now open at 8:24 PM. Do any members of the council have any conflicts to disclose? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication as required by law?
Yes, sir, I do.
Do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Will staff please present the reports? My understanding that Tony Stewart, Community Development Director, will make the report. Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, one audience. Per Government Code Section 65865.1, development agreements shall be reviewed on a regular basis to ensure the applicants or their successors thereto are in compliance with the agreed upon provisions of their respective agreements. Review of development agreements is subject to public hearing and is a quasi judicial action with the potential to affect divested property rights. And because of this, the city council member should not leave the dais during the discussion or receive any ex parte communications regarding the subject matter. Development agreement may only be terminated or modified by the reviewing body, excuse me, if the evidence before the city council demonstrates substantial evidence of that the developer has not complied with the terms of the agreement in good faith. Now, in the city of Port Waenimi, in lieu of a cannabis tax, we require development agreements of all of our cannabis businesses. In fact, we've got 19 of them in effect right now. Each agreement generally has the same following requirements, which are, complete the development of the proposed cannabis business and open it within one year of approval of that development agreement, provide a long-term source of revenue for the city, provide the city directly with additional revenue in the form of an increase in certain taxes. Primarily, this would be sales tax revenue. Provide additional monies for the city's general fund through contractual payments and that varies with the type of cannabis business we have in operation. In this case, for the items tonight, that would be 5% retail dispensaries. And provide certain community benefits, which is generally 1%, 1% of gross revenues or the equivalent. This evening's item provides the outcome of the annual view of seven of our dispensaries, actually the first seven that opened for business. And the findings for each of these are as follows. For DBO Investments, also known as From the Earth, they are in full compliance with the exception of one item, and that is wholly making their contractual payment. The business has stated that the reason for this is because of an ongoing dispute with their former delivery service. However, they have committed to making partial payments, which they've been doing on a weekly basis. And they've also committed to making a full payment of the remaining monies by the end of this month. Emerald Perspective is in full compliance. Freedom First, also known as Skunk Masters, is in full compliance. Harbor Management, AKA Safeport, is in full compliance. Waenimi Patient Consumer, AKA HCD, is in full compliance. Port Retail LLC, formerly known as Leap and Line and now Tree Factory, is in full compliance with the exception of making their 1% contribution to the community. This business has had ownership turnover and due to prior management issues, they were barely able to even keep operating. They were definitely operating in the red. They did make their city payments to us, but they did not make any contractual payments. New management and ownership took over in this, this past May. And since then, they've already been a sponsor of the Beach Festival. They made several other fairly substantial contributions and they provided over 80 hours of staff volunteer service to various organizations. So they're already showing a commitment to bump up and meet their 1% commitment and will continue to do so. And then finally, Wheelhouse Professional Management LLC, AKA, excuse me, Westside Professional Management LLC. Just want to get that right for the record, AKA Wheels House is in full compliance. So as indicated in the staff report, to protect each of the business's financial information and to also protect the names of the community organizations who may not be on, want to be on the record as receiving donations from cannabis businesses, specific dollar amounts were not provided. However, staff, as well as HDL, our consultants through our cannabis program, annually review and audit each business's financial records to assure compliance with the required payment amounts. Therefore, since five of the several, seven businesses that I mentioned this evening are in full compliance with their respective agreements and the other two only have one issue with each and are, have committed to becoming in full compliance, it is recommended that the city council do the following. Open the public hearing to take testimonial and documentary evidence. Close the public hearing and consider the evidence. And adopt resolutions determining that the following cannabis dispensaries are in compliance with their respective development agreements. DBO Investments Group PH LLC, Emerald Perspective, Freedom First Association, Harbor Management Group LLC, Waenimi Patient Consumer, Port Retail LLC, and Westside Management Group LLC, or take such additional related action as made to be desirable. So this concludes my presentation. Madam available to answer any questions you may have? Just a side note, we do have Zaher Laljy from Wheelhouse here this evening. In case you have any questions of him. However, I mentioned to the other cannabis business owners that this was pretty much a, just a mandatory function and that since most of them were in compliance, that their presence here this evening was optional. Of course, with COVID and right now, and also some conflicts. Here we are with Mr. Laljy at least. So anyway, if you have any questions, I'm, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony Stewart, for the presentation. Counsel, are there any questions of Mr. Stewart?
I just had one. Collectively, how much money does a 1% represent that's been given to the community groups over the year? If you were to include all the different groups combined, how much is that 1% about?
I don't have that exact figure, but it'd be over $200,000.
I saw a hand back there.
So a million dollars represents the 1%? Oh, wow. Okay. And there, there's some kind, I, I can understand like, you know, is there any way to be able to find out how they, it was dispersed out, the million dollars? Great, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Are there any public comments submitted regarding this matter?
No, sir.
Thank you. Staff, have any other further questions or comments?
I do not.
Do not? Thank you. If there is no further discussion, we will close the public hearing, the time being 8:29 PM. We have before us a recommendation. The recommendation is to open, open the public hearing to take testimony and documentary evidence and close the public hearing and consider the evidence and adopt resolutions determining that the following cannabis dispensaries are in compliance with their prospective development agreements. DBO Investments LLC, Emerald Perspective, Freedom First Association, Harbor Management Group, Waenimi Patient Consumer. I think that might be a typo. Is it?
That's actually their name at this point. Yeah.
HPC.
They took the collective off of their name a while back.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Port Retail LLC and Westside Management Group LLC. Take additional related action that may be desirable. May I have a motion? Thank you. We have a motion in a second. We'll take a roll call vote on this one.
Mayor Pro Tim Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're moving on to item nine, adoption of a mitigated negative declaration for the Bubbling Springs Park renewal project grant application. The hearing is now open. It is 8:32 PM. Do any members of the council have any conflicts to disclose? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do you have proof of publication as required by law?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have a complete file of reports and exhibits?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Will staff present the report? Mr. Tony Stewart, Community Development Director, the floor is yours.
Thank you again and good evening again. The city's Recreation and Community Service Division has submitted what they call a Prop 68 grant application to the state. And this is to request 8.5 million funds to help develop improvements to Bubbling Springs Park through a rehab program. And this would be per the recently adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan. As part of the grant application, the state of California is requesting approval of SECA documentation for the proposed project. Now normally, that comes with an actual development application, but at this point in the process, we have a conceptual plan. And that again is the one that's based on the Parks Master Plan. So in order to, to, to comply with the state's requirements for the grant and ensure that the application is hopefully approved, staff went ahead and hired Rincon consultants to prepare an initial study. And what that initial study did was it was based on that, the idea that there would be future construction based upon this conceptual plan. And, but before that happens, there'll be actual planning documents and entitlement application coming in for approval through the city council. At that point, there'd be subsequent SECA analysis. But this document at least could be used to build upon that. Now with regard to the initial study when it was prepared, Rincon found that there were the potential for significant environmental impacts due to future construction in the following categories. And those were aesthetics, air quality, biological resources and cultural resources, unless mitigation was proposed. With regard to aesthetics, it was based on the potential for new lighting to be constructed for nighttime use of future improved ballfields at the park. And this could result in an increase in light intrusion into nearby residences. Therefore, mitigation measures would be proposed at the time that the actual entitlement application comes in to require the city to prepare a detailed lighting plan for the elevated lighting fixtures for the ballfields and limit the lighting in the fields to either before 10 PM and/or when the fields were not in use. In other words, the lights would not just remain on with the empty field. Regarding air quality, nitrous oxide emissions from future construction activities could exceed the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District's maximum threshold of 25 pounds per day. So to mitigate that, we would require the use of construction equipment to be designed to reduce emissions in compliance with EPA regulations, which would reduce the maximum daily to 23 pounds a day under that threshold. Regarding biology, that is basically dealing with the potential for disturbing nesting birds. So mitigation would be to require pre-construction nesting bird surveys and avoidance of active nests, which again would either reduce and/or eliminate any impact to the birds. And finally, with regard to cultural resources, during future construction, there could be the potential to deserve previously unknown artifacts. Therefore, three mitigation measures are proposed and that would be to, if resources are encountered during ground disturbing activities, work in the immediate area would halt and an archaeologist would be immediately called in to evaluate the finds. The city then shall also contract with the Native American Monitor to be present during the constructive activities on the, on the project site. And if human remains were encountered, there'd be no further disturbance until the county coroner had made determination of the origin and disposition. So based on the need for these measures, a mitigated negative declaration, or MND, was prepared for this project. And as I mentioned before, when a formal design application comes before you, subsequent SECA analysis based upon this MND will be required at that time. However, with regard to the mitigation measures, if they are implemented, then the impact should be reduced to levels of insignificance. There was a required review period for the MND began on July 23rd of this year and ended on August 30th. During that time, staff received no responses on the MND itself. State law through Assembly Bill 52 also requires that local governments notify any information to our Native American tribes that may have interest in consultation about the project. There is a 30-day review period for that and it began on June 17th and ended on July 18th. And during that time period, we request no, we received no requests for consultation. So therefore, we received no comments on the MND. Therefore, there is nothing to report back on. And so with that and the fact that there is the potential to mitigation to be imposed at a later date that will put our potential impacts to levels of insignificance, it is recommended that the city council open the public hearing and take a, again, testimonial and documentary evidence, close the public hearing, consider this evidence, adopt a resolution to adopt the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Bubbling Springs Park renewal project, or take such additional related action as made to be desirable. And I'm available for any questions with regard to the SECA document, the MND. Anna Hanley, our Recreation and Community Services Manager is here in case you have any questions about the status of the Prop 68 grant itself. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Does counsel have any questions of staff?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Hernandez, go first.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for the presentation. I, and thank you, Anna Hanley, for being here tonight. We heard a presentation, a public comment this evening about the non-native species along Bubbling Springs Creek. What's the reality of doing anything about that? Are there certain laws that prohibit us from going in there and removing the non-native species and replacing that? And are there any plans in our, in the renewal project to do that?
So in this particular project, it was determined that the scope of this project would deal just with the Bubbling Springs Park. And so it was determined specifically through Rincon and also with the state to keep the corridor out of it. So this does not actually address that. However, in answer to your question, and Charles Campbell could probably really speak to this much better than I could, there are quite a few regulations with regard to the, dealing with removal of wetlands and whatnot that do need to be addressed and complied with, which is something that they face all the time. So Charles could answer to any questions or requirements and whatnot.
I thought there might be.
If I may, mayor, it was specific to the channel. We are in the midst of a permitting process with the same contractor and the abatement of the reeds that were described in that public opinion will be abated towards the end of this year.
Okay, great, thank you.
So this, does this next phase in this process mean that we as a city moved into the potential of being awarded or are all cities having to go through the same process?
This, I'm sorry, can you hear me? This particular component was a requirement of our application. So to be complete and full in its submission, this component needed to also be submitted. So we're adding this as a supplemental document after the fact. Because we did not have a full and complete proposal and conceptual project because we were in the Parks Master Plan process. The state understood that, still encouraged our application, and we had a window of time to to provide a timeframe for the submission of this. So it's the last component that we need.
Councilmember Martinez, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Rollins?
So with all this work being done, what are the deadlines at the timelines as far as whether we, when and if we hear that will be approved?
Sure, so an encouraging component was that we were contacted by the state directly to receive an onsite site visit in review with one of the state representatives, which I conducted with that individual at the end of July. During that time, and it was a very positive experience, I thought it was a great opportunity for us to let these projects shine and for them to take in our city and the atmosphere in these parks and really be able to articulate the need firsthand. So I'm extremely grateful that we were given the site review process and walkthrough. They received two point four billion dollars and asked for three hundred and ninety-five million dollars in. So their timeframe and expectation and level of review was extended out because the submissions were just overwhelming. Essentially what they've given us would have been a five-month response we expected to hear in August. They changed that to a very generic statement of late summer, early fall. So that's the best expectation unfortunately that we have at this point. I'm still hopeful and I hope that we hear within a month's time.
And so we did this for Bubbling Springs. Do we, are there any necessary to do this with the bulk or part of it?
So in this, in the case of the bulk or project, there was the need for sequoia documentation. However, because of the the scope of that project being quite a bit less than the Bubbling Springs one, we handled that through my desk actually with a an exemption to sequoia, a notice of exemption. That has already been processed through the county and we've received that back and Anna has moved that on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any public comments submitted regarding this matter?
No, sir.
Thank you. Staff have any other further comments, questions? No? Okay, if there's no further discussion, yes, miss?
Good luck.
There's no further discussion, we'll close the public hearing the time being eight forty-four P M. Madam Clerk, when it says read the exact resolution ordinance titles, does that mean I read the blue on top and not the recommendation?
You don't have to read the recommendation as in like opening the public hearing, it's really just the the items that we'd be adopting, the resolution title.
Okay, because last time I read the recommendation, so I realize that, okay, thank you. Okay, so we have before us an adoption of a mitigated negative declaration of the Bubbling Springs Park Renewal Project Grant Application. May I have a recommendation, a motion to move on the recommendations?
Do approve.
Second.
Thank you, we will now have a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, business items number ten, designation of voting delegates and alternative alternates for the twenty-twenty-one League of California Cities Annual Conference in Direction on Proposed Resolution. Will staff please present the report?
Yes, sir. Kristy Buxkemper, City Clerk, for the record. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Each year, the League of California City holds an annual conference to keep cities apprised of new legal and legislative updates and provides an opportunity to debate controversial issues. This year, the conference will take place in Sacramento from September twenty-second through twenty-fourth. And I applaud you all for registering and attending that wonderful event. At the conclusion of the conference, the league holds their annual business meeting during which league policy membership considers and takes action on proposed resolutions that establish league policy. Policy development is vital and ongoing process within the league and voting assures city officials the opportunity to both initiate and influence policy decisions. Each member city is allowed one voting delegate, which must be voted on by the city council and adopted by resolution. Each city is also allowed to designate two voting alternates. This voting alternate would vote in the event that the designated voting delegate is unable to attend the meeting. This year, the League of California Cities introduced two resolutions for consideration at the General Assembly Meeting. After careful consideration of the proposed resolutions, council may either direct the voting delegate to take a specific position to support, oppose or abstain from the voting on the resolutions or provide direction to the delegate to consider all information presented at the General Assembly and vote in a manner they believe to be in the best interest of the city as a whole. Tonight's recommendation is to appoint a member of the city council as a voting delegate and appoint up to two alternates to vote on behalf of the city at the annual business meeting and to adopt a resolution designating that voting delegate and alternate for the twenty-twenty-one League of California Cities Annual Conference. You are also have the opportunity to discuss the League of California Cities' proposed resolutions and provide any desired direction to the chosen voting delegate. Upon your appointments, I'll submit all adopted resolutions and paperwork. And this concludes my report and I welcome any questions you might have.
Do we have a list of the possible resolutions or when will that come to us?
You do, sir, that was included in the packet, there were two resolutions proposed.
Okay, and then are there a method for additional items to come forward or is this it?
That's it, those were vetted through, so those are the only two resolutions that will be proposed and voted on at the conference.
Okay, and then would we then have to decide perhaps tonight whether or not to agendize them at a future meeting before? Or actually it would have to be our next meeting?
You could, they were, that's open for discussion for tonight. If you would like additional time to review those resolutions, we can certainly bring them back for your discussion.
Okay, so have staff taken, have council reviewed the resolutions? I haven't, so I'll just be transparent, so I'm trying to.
I think basically what they're saying with the new national economy where they have a lot of offline sales, you know, local communities are not benefiting from that. They're, you know, in the past, you would get your sales tax directly from brick and mortar stores that were in your business. But now with like Wayfair and all of that, the money doesn't necessarily come directly to the local cities in the way that it should be. And this is a resolution by the different cities throughout the state that the money that is spent by residents in a local community, that sales tax dollars will go to them, and there's all sorts of formulas in there, but that's basically it.
Mister City Attorney?
If the council wants me to
We would.
quasi-intelligently on this, I'll do my best.
We'll go with that intelligently.
There are, there are two resolutions put forth by the league, one of which has pretty much unanimous support. And it's basically a resolution calling for the governor to allocate funding to California Public Utilities Commission for the purposes of cleaning up railways and things of that nature, graffiti abatement and things of that nature. So it's really just a calling for the governor to allocate funds and for the state legislature to approve a budgetary issue to do that, and there's no real opposition to this. The the second resolution, which I believe you were provided the letter from the city manager of Eastvale, what that really has to do with is it has to do with the distinctions between a sales tax and a transactions and use tax. But the argument advanced by Eastvale is actually simpler than that. Really what the league put forth is a resolution asking the state legislature to take some action, any action, with no real guidance. And the concern, the concern identified by Eastvale is that historically, when the state legislature is asked to help cities, it hasn't really worked out really well for the cities. It's kind of like asking a judge to do something and everybody gets something that they don't want. And so what the recommended, what Eastvale recommends is that the resolution be amended to reconvene the city managers working group so that they can actually provide solutions that the league thinks would be appropriate to combat this issue to the legislature instead of essentially asking the legislature with blank check to do whatever they want.
So is the, we're looking at a fulfillment center being established here in the city of Oxnard?
Correct.
Okay, just so I want to understand.
I can go through the the major financial issue. It has to do with the distinction between a sales tax and a transactions and use tax, so I'll use Oxnard as an example. Prior to a change in, let's say, Amazon's organizational structure, that facility that's being constructed in Oxnard would have been operated by a third-party vendor. And what that means is that Oxnard would have been, or or Amazon would have been an out-of-state vendor, an out-of-state party, and its distribution center would have been operated by a third-party vendor, which means that sales tax would not have applied. But use tax would, some similar to our measure U. And that means that any taxes derived therefrom would go to the county pool and then it would be distributed to all of the member cities of the county, including Port Winyimi. Since Oxnard has taken over its distribution centers, or not Oxnard, Amazon has taken over its distribution centers, it's no longer a use tax, it's a sales tax. And now we get into the SITUS location, which means Oxnard keeps the money, it doesn't get shared with us.
So is this not addressing like, for example, when my wife orders stuff from Amazon to be it's being purchased in Winyimi?
Right.
Is that tax revenue coming to Winyimi?
No.
Okay, so does this attempt to correct that?
This is asking the legislature to do something to correct that, but it's not giving any direction to the legislature as to how.
Now, why in the world would we want to support that?
Because there's a, my suspicion is that there's a consensus that something needs to be done to make this more equitable. But my suspicion is that during the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen City Managers Working Group Conference, they were unable to come to an agreement as to what that would look like. So city of Eastvale's position is that there is more work to be done and that this resolution should not be approved until it has been properly vetted by the league and the league is prepared to offer suggestions as to how to accomplish an equitable distribution to the state legislature.
So with the success of Amazon comes the declining tax revenue for cities.
Just mainly because they changed their corporate organizational structure and no longer use third-party vendors to operate their distribution facilities. Had they not changed their organization structure at the beginning of this year, it wouldn't have been a problem and it would have operated as a use tax and would have gone into the county pool so that the cities would have all shared.
Distributed equally.
Correct.
But how does, how does one company have that power?
It's not necessarily the company, it has to do with the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration and how they determine what taxes apply to certain transactions.
But I thought you said if they didn't change their structure.
It's because Amazon was an out-of-state retailer that operated its facilities through third-party vendors. Therefore, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administrators determined it was not a sales tax, it was a use tax. Once they changed that and they didn't use third-party vendors with respect to their distribution facilities, it became a sales tax and not a use tax. It has to do more with the complex regulations that the state of California has regarding taxation than it does with Amazon dictating how it goes. Amazon is still going to find itself subject to a one percent tax, either sales or use. And if I'm Amazon, I don't really care who gets the money, I'm paying it anyway.
But if you're the city of Port Winyimi, you want your seven and
Exactly.
quarter percent.
Exactly, which is, which is why the city of Eastvale is saying we don't want the state legislature without any direction to make up its mind how it happened, how this gets equally distributed or if it gets distributed at all. They would rather the league sit down and come to consensus with its member agencies and propose a solution rather than write a blank check, as it were.
But is there any mechanism or any thought to allowing cities like the city of Port Winyimi to? I mean, we passed, what was it, measure U that added a one percent or one penny or one percent increase to our
Right, as a use tax.
As a use tax.
It's a tut, it's a transactions and use tax. Individual cities are without authority to pass quote, "sales taxes." What we can do is we can tack on to a base, to a base sales tax by using a transactions and use tax. Sales taxes are really operations of county and what determines how much money we can get in a transactions and use tax is how much the county and the other neighboring cities have tacked on to the end of it. Because we're limited to something like ten percent. Because the county of Ventura hadn't taken up the full ten percent as sales tax, it allowed us the opportunity to take a full cent or a full percent as a transactions and use tax. So we were fortunate in that regard. If we lived in a different county or were located in a different county that had a higher sales tax, we would not have been able to do that. Right.
It just means we want to participate in that conversation.
Right, so the question that's really being posed and the argument advanced by Eastvale is does the city want to support the resolution from the league where the state legislature gets to decide everything? Or would you rather approve a resolution that directs the League of Cities to reconvene its city manager working group and come up with proposed solutions prior to sending it to the legislature?
I like option two, but but how do we, this resolution doesn't necessarily promote option two.
It does because Eastvale and a number of cities are making a motion at the, they've got a working group that's going to not pass the original resolution unless it's so amended. And that would be the direction that we would provide our voting delegate.
Right, and we need to receive as much revenue, tax revenue as possible and the the success of Amazon is taking, in other words, if I go buy my Listerine at C V S, I'm paying taxes on it.
Correct.
If I order it from Amazon, there is no seven percent tax, seven and a quarter.
Well, it's just not being distributed the same way, it's going to a different city and the county.
It's not fair, okay. So your, your recommendation is to support this?
My recommendation would be to support the East, the city of Eastvale's position, which is to only approve or only vote yes in favor of the resolution if it is amended to require the league to go back to the city managers working group to propose a solution that we can then take to the state legislature.
Yes, please.
Has staff studied this issue and determined what the level of impact this would have on our city?
My understanding is is staff has not looked into this issue specifically and gone through the H D L data with respect to transactions and use tax and measure U. I do know that the the information advanced by the league as well as the information advanced by the city of Eastvale is that it's difficult to determine what the fiscal impacts are currently given this year, given the way that COVID nineteen has changed the nature of all economic activities. And so everybody's seeing a decline now, in any event, it's unclear as to what the fiscal effects really are at this point.
And do we know what the other cities are doing in the county? Do we know how they're positioning themselves?
I do not, but I can, I can speculate that if I was a city with an Amazon fulfillment settle center, I would be just fine with the way that C D T F A is interpreting the new tax laws.
In the league packet that you were provided, they have support letters, letters of support included.
I didn't see anything from Ventura County.
City of Moore Park is a city in support.
That was just the first, that was not the they just supported the first resolution?
Yes, they supported the the request to have the state legislature do some unspecified action.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution, resolution number two, so basically it's kind of of the same ilk that we're just going to trust the governor and the legislature to provide necessary funding to clean up and removing illegal dumping graffiti and homeless encampments that degrade the quality of life. and removing illegal dumping graffiti and homeless encampments that degrade the quality of life and result in increased public safety concerns. So wasn't there a recent case, Ninth Circuit, that eh, came in and said you can't take the property of a homeless person?
Eh, yes, eh, um, eh, that's been the law for quite a long time. It, it's kind of a, and, and Martin V. Boise kind of is an outgrowth of that. Um, eh, but eh, what this is really asking for is, is the CPUC is already subject to a mandate. The problem is it's unfunded. And so this is really, this is really a spending bill, um, which is more of like a budgetary issue, not approval to have CPUC go through and, 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 and clean up. They already have that mandate. Now it's let's fund it. So eh, it's kind of one of the, one of the tricks that gets played at state and federal level is we give you a mandate, we don't fund it and then it doesn't happen, but we did it. And so eh, this is obligating them to actually go through with it.
I think, eh, I think that's a worthy pursuit.
I just had a question. The, um, currently like the two rail, eh, two railroad lines that go through our city, they're not owned by the railroad, they're owned by, I think, the port and some, maybe some other entity. So would this require who owns it or the railroads itself to pay for all of those different things that they want to fix up?
This would affect, and eh, in my opinion, and having just briefly reviewed this, this would affect any railroads that fall into the jurisdiction of the California Public Utilities Commission. So I'm not sure that the two railroads eh, eh, adjacent to our city or within our city are owned by the CPUC or operated by the CPUC. I believe they fall under private operation and there would be different funding sources. I don't believe this resolution would affect our city.
Okay. Okay, so any other questions for city attorney? Okay, who would like to volunteer to be the voting delegate and alternate? I think all five of us are going, correct?
That's correct.
And I'll be there too, if anybody has any questions. I will.
You probably need your advice. Sounds pretty complicated. So would anybody like to volunteer to be the voting delegate? Misty, I nominate Misty to be our voting delegate.
Do we need an alternate?
Can I have a, do we need a second?
We can do each roll call individually and we'll do alternates next.
Okay, I motion to, to elect Councilmember Perez as our voting delegate. Come second.
Oh, a second?
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Perez will be our voting delegate and, uh, we can have the opportunity to select up to two alternates.
Okay, in the event that you cannot fulfill your duty as a voting delegate, then we would nominate an alternate.
That's correct.
Okay, anybody wish to serve as an alternate?
I did it in twenty nineteen.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Councilmember Martinez to serve as the first alternate. May I have a second?
A second?
All right.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Okay, in the unlikely event that neither Councilmember Perez or Councilmember Martinez cannot serve in their roles as uh, voting delegate and alternate, do we need to have another alternate?
At your choosing, sir. It's up to you.
I nominate, nominate Mayor Gama.
I'll second now.
All right.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama.
Yes, and, uh, just want to thank Kevin for that great update, um, and, uh, yeah, we got a lot to talk about, um, cause that, that's, that's a really interesting dynamic that we don't really think about, but, um, I've been watching that fulfillment center growing and it's huge and, uh, crazy.
And, and one of the things that is mentioned in the city of Eastvale letter is that it has a, it has a really harsh effect for cities such as ours that are built out. We can't build a one million square foot facility. And so certain cities and, and municipal entities are certainly benefiting quite a bit from a simple change in corporate structure that has far reaching unintended consequences.
Yeah, and it's just fascinating to watch because you know how difficult it is for us to get a project going and get in, but man, Amazon rolls in overnight like eh, you know, twelve battalions of stuff and it just boom, it just appears and they're still going. And I think they're going to do a second part of it as well.
Aren't there not two? Isn't there an Amazon in Camaria?
It's a different thing.
It's a different?
There's a fulfillment center and then a merchandise center.
Oh.
Can I just, uh, offer a suggestion to our delegates that you might want to check your flight tickets because you end up staying at the very end for, to, to place the boat. So you might want to make sure you don't leave the conference early to catch a flight. You need to hang out and wait till it's over.
You're gonna drive. Nice. Okay, well, any other business on that matter?
And I went to law school at McGeorge in Sacramento, so if anybody needs any, uh, recommendations of where to go, I've got some hookups.
All right.
All right, karaoke?
Old town.
Old town. I, I very much like, uh, the, the firehouse. It's fantastic.
Oh, yeah, it's a good one.
Okay, great. We are now moving on to item number eleven, legal services agreement with Green D. Portnozki LLP to continue services of Port Wainimi city attorney. I think that involves Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Councilmember. Um, this, uh, particular contract was, uh, issued in twenty seventeen as a result of a request for qualifications, competitive bid. Competitive bid in which, uh, the firm of Green, Dave Paskowski, um, was selected as part of that, uh, competitive process. Uh, renewal for that contract occurred two years later and, uh, that contract is due for renewal at this time. The staff recommendation is to again renew this contract for this law firm. And, uh, most notable during the time that we've had, um, Green, their Paskowski serve as our city attorney, uh, legal counsel and provide legal services. We've, um, uh, activated, um, through their guidance and facilitated the cannabis business. Um, we've, uh, uh, adopted a measure U which, uh, has resulted in almost two point eight million dollars annually in additional revenue. Uh, and probably of significant of late, eh, in, in particular with, uh, the deputy city attorney, Kevin Spalding. We've, uh, processed the variety of different executive orders and, uh, challenges, uh, that brought, eh, that was brought with the pandemic. The only difference in the contract, it's not price, it's not anything else. Uh, however, eh, Mr. Spalding will be named our primary city attorney instead of the deputy. And with that, uh, there is no fiscal impacts other than, uh, continuing to pay for those services.
Thank you for that. I was going to suggest that. Uh, great anticipation. Congratulations, Mr. Spalding. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Shall we do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're moving on to item number twelve. Proposed ordinance prohibiting use or sale of expanded polystyrene EPS and single-serve plastics throughout the city of Port Wainimi. Will staff please present this report?
Thank you, Mayor Gama, honorable councilmembers. Uh, this report primarily comes as a result of the, uh, my original plastics, uh, proposal a few city council meetings ago, and I believe two city council meetings ago, Surf Rider Foundation gave a, a presentation on their proposed EPS ordinance. And so what I have done is I, I requested a copy of the proposed EPS ordinance and I've reviewed it. Um, eh, if you remember correctly, I, I believe it was Joan Tharp said that no county, no city in the county has yet adopted the ordinance in its entirety, but we are, eh, there are many variations of it throughout. And so what I did is I went through the proposed ordinance and identified key features of it and then made a recommendation as to, uh, direction to staff as to what to potentially create, uh, following council member discussion. And so eh, my review of the ordinance is eh, eh, the ordinance really eh, relies on its definition. So eh, eh, it talks about food provider versus vendor. And they have a slightly different definition, but eh, the main, the main distinction of this is that Surf Rider's proposed ordinance seeks to prohibit a food provider defined as any business that sells or conveys food or beverages from providing any EPS, which is, uh, polystyrene type products, uh, plastic or bioplastic food container, cup or lid, straws, utensils, stirs, lid plugs and condiment cups. Um, eh, in addition, the proposed ordinance, uh, expands this, eh, it seeks to prohibit the use of these products within city facilities and prevent any city contractor or event promoter from using or providing these materials. Um, eh, where the ordinance expands this, this prohibition is to vendors which are defined as any store or business within the city that sells or offers food, eh, goods or merchandise regardless of whether the store or business is engaged in food service. So eh, a more appropriate reading of the proposed ordinance from Surf Rider is that any business in the city is prohibited from providing EPS, plastics, straws, uh, single-use foodwares, eh, things of that nature. It's not just related to, to food service. Uh, unless there are exemptions at work and those exemptions are provided for in the ordinance. Um, specifically when we're talking about EPS, expanded polystyrene type products, uh, surfboards and things like that would be exempted based on the fact that they're fully encapsulated unless they're broken. Um, and so what we're thinking about is like, uh, you know, eh, things that have to be fully encapsulated. So eh, so otherwise like shipping boxes, uh, those, those polystyrene ice chests that we see in the grocery stores, those would be prohibited, but fully encased, uh, non-destructable polystyrene would still remain legal under the proposed ordinance. In addition, the Surf Rider's proposed ordinance also, uh, also requires that any disposable, uh, foodware such as, um, plastic utensils and things like that sold by food vendors should only be made available upon request to the extent those items are legal. So for example, if we're, if we're requiring biodegradable, eh, biodegradable foodwares and things of that nature, uh, it wouldn't be automatically provided. Um, and, and it, it further goes on to expand that to, uh, DoorDash and, and delivery type companies would then be obligated to provide a box where you select whether or not you want any disposable foodwares to be included with your order. If you're eating at home, you'll use your own utensils. Now eh, what's interesting is the, the Surf Rider ordinance, uh, does exempt certain businesses, uh, from having to comply with this. And those exemptions are, are pretty much if there's a financial hardship or practical difficulty in complying with the ordinance, um, eh, public health or safety requires deviation from the ordinance. Or, uh, drinking straws may be provided to specified persons based upon public health or safety or other medical requirements in the discretion of city officials. Um, and like I said, certain products are exempted such as fully encapsulated EPS like surfboards and things like that. So eh, where an external surface prevents the, the ecological breakdown of those items. Um, construction products that are used to comply with environmental restrictions and things of that nature would also be exempted. And, uh, also there's an exemption during declared local emergencies to the extent that, that that would be necessary. Um, eh, the ordinance also eh, delegates enforcement to the city attorney like most ordinances and takes a graduated approach with escalated penalties for subsequent violations. Upon reviewing the Surf Rider's proposed ordinance, I, I recommend actually following a vast majority of it. Um, eh, prohibiting food vendors and, and businesses from selling or providing expanded polystyrene, single-use plastics and things of that nature, uh, prohibiting the sale or provision of, or distribution of EPS, plastic, bioplastic foodwares within the city. Uh, requiring food providers to supply foodware accessories made of biodegradable materials only. Um, we've heard from Surf Rider that the Ventura, that the Ventura ordinance was widely accepted and that most vendors and businesses are moving in this direction anyway. So I don't anticipate that there's a, a huge fiscal concern among the restaurant community. Uh, in any event, uh, we would have a public hearing on any draft ordinance I bring forth anyway, and those people could make their voices heard then. Um, the main eh, issue that I, that I have with it is I would recommend against prohibiting the use of, the use of EPS plastics or bioplastics in city facilities or elsewhere in the city. Um, eh, what I'm envisioning is that, uh, suppose somebody goes to a city that doesn't have any such restrictions and are able to buy like, you know, their lunch from Newberry Park and they bring it here to eat it. The proposed ordinance would make that illegal and would subject that person to penalties for bringing that foodware into a city facility. Um, eh, to me, that's a bit harsh and a bit, and a bit draconian. Um, eh, so eh, I can see banning it for sale or provision in the city, but bringing it in, I, I don't see as, as being particularly enforceable and, and eh, eh, it seems to me it would set up for some perhaps interesting conversations between law enforcement or whoever is, is called upon to enforce this. And eh, it just, I don't think it leaves a good taste in most people's mouths. And of course, I would also authorize the city manager to grant exemptions from the application of the proposo- proposed ordinance. How I like to do certain things like this i- in any ordinance that I would propose was, I would also propose a, a resolution that sets forth the criteria by which the city manager would, would exercise his discretion. Resolutions tend to be easier to modify and amend as time goes on and experience dictates anyway. So for the most part, I would, I would recommend that we come forward with a draft ordinance that adopts most of the Surf Rider's recommendations with eliminating the use restrictions.
I have a question.
Question?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Martinez, go ahead.
How would it affect the elementary schools?
Uh, the elementary schools would be prohibited from providing EPS as well as, uh, single-serve plastics and whatnot. However, at council direction, we could exempt, uh, uh, public schools and things of that nature. Or we could not.
Councilmember Mark, uh, Hernandez?
So, um, I, what caught my ear was, um, eh, the definition of vendors and does this venture into our cannabis businesses and do cannabis businesses, would they fall under this?
I would argue yes.
So, wow.
They don't use EPS.
Go easy on them?
No, no, I don't think they rely on EPS.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. Councilmember Perez?
So prohibit the sale, provision, distribution of plastic foodwares within the city, which means all our grocery stores no longer selling plastic fork, you can't use plastic forks.
They would be required to switch to biodegradable, biodegradable products.
And all of our small businesses have to completely switch to all biodegradable? Have we even looked at the impact of what this is going to do for our businesses?
We have not. Eh, the, the, the main point of this ordinance is that it was, eh, it was modeled after the one that Ventura City brought forth. And from what I've read in Ventura County Star and, and other reports anecdotally is most of the small businesses have already made that switch in the first place. And there's been overwhelming support. What, uh, Ventura did is Ventura went and actually had, eh, like a public workshop and eh, public outreach in order to discuss this matter with their, with their small businesses and with their food vendors and came back with, with significant support for it. Uh, that's also of course an option with the council.
I agree with that option. I think we should definitely ask what our small businesses can do, are able to do, are willing to do. I, we can't discount their participation in this and what this means to them.
Councilmember Martinez, I thought you had a question or a comment? Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
I had just two. I had been talking to some of the businesses and, um, there is a concern that while they're in favor of this, it's going to be more costly for them to switch over to biodegradable. And is there a way that we can, um, and I, I always mess up the ne- the, the name of it, but the co- the COVID relief funds that are coming in, would we be able to attach to this ordinance that we would provide some kind of support to the businesses as a transitionary thing to be able to, um, transition to utilize these things, but we're, we're asking you to do this, but we're going to help you out.
Eh, I, I think you're referring to the American Rescue Plan Fund.
Correct.
Eh, I, I don't think, eh, the nature of this particular, um, eh, support mechanism in terms of funding small businesses is, um, aligned with the intent of the Treasury Department because it's a, it's a, it's a COVID-related, eh, impact that it's supposed to resolve. And therefore, um, since this is not necessarily related to COVID, it wouldn't apply. That would be my quasi legal interpretation.
I would, I would tend to agree. I was trying to go through this, eh, through the scenarios or the, the rubric of, of who gets money under the, under the Relief Act and I don't believe this would be.
Yeah, because I'm just concerned a lot of the businesses have gone through this, um, COVID, uh, problem and declining sales and then we're asking them to make some further things that. problem and declining sales, and then we're asking them to make some further things that will cost them more money and how as a city we can support that we want you to go in this direction but to help out.
If I may, Mayor, assigning a funding mechanism out of the American Rescue Plan specific to funding a conversion of the products that they use because of this ordinance, that may not be appropriate. However, businesses can use funds to do other things to improve their business environment, to make accommodations for things that, so we don't necessarily stipulate exactly what they do with the fund. When you put a restriction on it to this, then I think it becomes an issue with the guidance provided by you as treasurer.
In addition, one of my recommendations is also to grant a financial hardship exemption in the event that would be vested in the city manager's discretion, in the event that a business who would be so affected can demonstrate that they would suffer adverse financial hardship in actually implementing it.
And I know you mentioned within the, some of the materials that would be illegal. If shipping materials also include a lot of that types of stuff that we're making illegal. I know that things that need to be refrigerated or, you know, kept cold, come in Styrofoam-type things, things are packed with all the little, was it the?
Peanuts.
Things. Does this affect any of that?
Yes. That would be illegal for sailor provision within the city.
So how about, now sailor provisions, stuff, and I guess it ties into like what we were talking about with the League of Cities, stuff that shipped from someplace else to us. What, how will that affect?
I recommended not banning the use of those things in the city, but mainly the provision and the sale. And there's a number of reasons why. I cited enforcement, but like, if we're talking about things that come in, let's say through our neighbor's special district or Amazon or something like that, we are now getting into an area of law that is, affects the interstate commerce clause, and we start having some interesting federal dynamics that can start to develop. And whether or not we're acting in a protection, we're not acting as a market participant because we don't have our own shipping company or we're not, you know, engaged in the process of manufacturing packing peanuts or something like that. It can start to look protectionist and it can start to affect Congress's designs in interstate commerce, and that, we can run into some real problems with that. And so while we ban the provision of it within our city limits and the sale of it within our city limits, that alone, I don't think rises to the level of implicating interstate commerce.
Councilwoman Perez?
I just have another comment. We're talking about creating an ordinance that would cause our police officers to have to cite a family for using plastic forks while eating a picnic at the beach is what we're talking about.
Which is again why I advised against banning the use.
Yeah.
Because that seems an untenable situation for everyone.
Which creates a negative police interaction, which creates...
Exactly. So the recommended ordinance, if council chooses to go that way, would limit any enforcement to the businesses that are providing or selling these materials, not the end users.
So you can't buy it at Ralph's, but you can use it?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
So what about the port and Navy base? Where would they fall in?
The Navy base is a US enclave and there is pretty much nothing we can do with respect to the Navy base. That's federal government property. In essence, it's not even part of the state or the county. It just simply is its own thing. The port, a special district, is a little bit of a less complicated analysis. Theoretically, they fall under our police powers. The real issue with the port is the interstate commerce clause under the US Constitution, and anybody who's done any research into interstate commerce and those powers reserved by Congress, they're complicated to say the least. And so I would recommend, that's one of the reasons why I think to limit the sailor provision here, not the use, is because I think that way we stay out of interstate commerce issues.
So I recently came across a statement that says, "Think globally, act locally." And I think that's what we need to do. We need to take action that's locally beneficial to our environment. And while everybody is uncomfortable with change, if you just pay attention to the way we're doing things now, like I know us and my family, we've been ordering and receiving to go, and the amount of plastic forks and spoons and napkins and Styrofoam in these things are just incredible. And so if we just educated that restaurant, don't send the plastic forks and stuff home because most times it ends up in the trash. We have our own forks and knives at home. So there is a big opportunity to educate the businesses on how, yes, it's going to cost you more money to have this packaging, however, there's an opportunity to save money by not doling out all this material if it's not necessary, if it's not needed. So I think, and I think that's one of the things that we could do.
And condiments, they just, they do.
The condiment package is driving me nuts. I mean, people come to Wainey Beach all the time, believe me, I know. And, you know, there's not a Chick-fil-A five, six miles within our beach, but we find it all the time. Condiment packets, like, you know, we could help to offset the cost of this, we could say, "Look, have a policy on your condiments." I mean, try to say, "Just give me two ketchup," and you end up, you know, you have a 16-year-old kid there that thinks it's cool, "I'll give you 12." Well, I need two. And then we find them on the beach and stuff. So I think there's a real opportunity for us to think globally and act locally to reduce pollution, and that's the other thing, is, you know, getting people to contain plastic. Plastic is a wonderful gift to humankind, but it has to be managed properly. And overusing it and giving it, you know, to people that don't need it is something that we could hopefully work on. And then in regards to, like, we just talked about Amazon, we ordered some lounge chairs that we had at the beach this weekend, but they came in boxes and they had Styrofoam sheets. And I didn't know how to throw these things away, and you have to break them to get them in the trash can, and then they disintegrate into little pieces, and then we find it out at Orman Lagoon. So maybe that's something as a city that we could organize through the California League of Cities and say, "Hey, guys," because Amazon is big enough to where they could handle shipping without Styrofoam and without the little plastic balls of air, you know? So maybe to address that concern about the interstate commerce, maybe we could take a lead in working with the California League of Cities to try and come up with a way to think globally and act locally and try to convert to paper. I mean, we have a paper plant right here in the city of Oxnard that recycles cardboard and makes paper that is used to make cardboard. So I think there's a lot we can do if we get creative and try to involve other jurisdictions because that's the other thing. If we're doing it on our own and the city of Oxnard has no interest in it, you know, and then the city of Ventura is doing what they did, if we worked as a county together, perhaps we could have more, more positive action to clean up our environment. I think we're doing a heck of a job here, and I think that, you know, we're moving upstream. And I think, I think all this is important, but I also think that we need to consider all those little issues that you bring up and try and tackle them one at a time.
I have one more comment. While thinking globally and acting locally and all that, I understand the concept, and it's all very important to protect our environment and reduce waste, but we have to remember that we're not the ones paying for this, we're making the order in law. So we have to invite the people who are, will be the ones financially affected by this into the conversation and make sure that they have a voice in this. I'm not comfortable deciding on something that I'm not going to be financially responsible for. I want to hear ways that we can help our businesses, what ways they need help, and what they have to say about it as well.
Yeah, there's a lot to be said. I know we were out to dinner and one restaurant owner in the city of Port Wainey told Mr. Rollins and I that the wax on the cardboard box can be problematic. Now, whether it's true or not, I'm not sure, but again, there's, you know, people are very resistant to change, and, you know, change management is a whole industry of itself. And, you know, we have to find ways to promote the positive change that we want and do it in a way that's educational and thoughtful and not financially ruining business. Councilmember Martinez?
We're not voting on like the ordinance today, right?
No, this is a discussion so that city council can decide next actions. I was directed to come back with a recommended ordinance. There's no need to, there's no requirement that council direct me to draft one if the direction that comes out of council is that more action or more research is required so that we understand the problem better and bring forth a more focused ordinance. That would be an appropriate action as would directing me to draft anything the council desires.
Yeah, because I do like your recommendations, but I also agree with Councilmember Perez that we should at least notify the restaurant owners, you know, just so they at least are aware of what's going on and what we're thinking about doing.
That's entirely within the council's discretion.
Yeah, so I think I'd be interested to hear what our next step would be, and I'd also be interested to hear from our council members as to how do we proceed, obviously with caution and with great care, but how do we, how do we set out on a course to enact an ordinance, get buy-in from our business community, and be successful in its implementation? So I would love to hear the recommendation or the way forward.
My first recommendation, I hate to nominate somebody who's not here to defend himself, but Steve Kenny has a fairly decent relationship with many of the businesses in Port Wainey. I believe he would be an excellent first step point of contact to determine what other action should come in in the event this becomes a discussion item in the future or even a public, not a public hearing, but a public workshop with affected restaurant owners. But I believe Steve Kenny would be an appropriate point of contact for any initial survey, and then we could provide that report to council in a public document.
I think that's a really good recommendation, and myself, again, I would like to see some kind of a network of our communities, meaning the cities of Ventura County, you know, what can we do? I mean, again, I just keep thinking back to this Amazon center that's blowing up with Styrofoam and plastic that's going to be shipped all over the state of California, you know? What could we do to say, "Hey, how about just using paper that's completely recyclable? Let's, you know, ship it all down to Perkins Road and their paper recycling plant because that's what they do." Anyways, any recommendation?
I like that recommendation. I think that should be my next suggestion.
Yeah, open up a public workshop?
I'd have Mr. Kenny.
You guys, you'd prefer Mr. Kenny reach out and try to develop a consensus to see if a public workshop is necessary?
Maybe we could have a future agenda item where our city manager can begin to come up with a couple strategies. Education, number one. Number two is the costing of what we're thinking about doing, like, you know, how do you, how do you implement this in a neutral fashion? And maybe we could come up with those strategies and then direct Mr. Kenny to go out and survey and educate the restaurant community is the community I think that we're most concerned about, particularly our local mom and pop owners. So is that descriptive enough to move forward, or do we need to have a motion?
I would prefer a motion so there's no misunderstanding, but I know exactly, Brad and I know exactly what it is that we are directed to do.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez can take a shot at it.
Yeah, I motion to have Steve Kenny go out and talk to the businesses and also for the city to open up a public workshop and another presentation where city manager just gives us some more details and information.
Is that descriptive enough?
Yes, I believe it is.
Think we could make it work?
It was all right.
I believe we can make it work. It will however take some time to actually cultivate those communications and have something to bring back.
On a pain scale of zero to 10, I'll give you a seven. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Perez?
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes. Sorry for not being prepared as to move on. That was a stimulating conversation. All right. We are now moving on to city manager comments and reports. Mr. City Manager, will you please provide any reports or comments that you have for council?
Thank you, Mayor. Much appreciated. As is our nature, every month we recognize a national cause and we support, we promote, and then we embrace it. This month, we have two. Emergency Preparation Month, which is probably very appropriate given the number of national disasters, specifically hurricane weather events on the East Coast. The other one is National Suicide Prevention. And so those two causes will be our causes for this month, and it will be accommodated with social media postings and public support coming out of this body, and there may be some other activities planned as well. We received notification this past week that our city has been recognized by our California Joint Insurance Authority for having and winning the best performance in risk management for our liability and our workers' compensation risk management. So that is a huge shift from a couple years ago, and it's, a lot of effort has gone into taking an approach and a strategy in order to relieve claims, and more importantly, the risk and threats associated with some of the activities that produce severe and multiple claims. So we will receive the reward at a conference this October.
October 7th.
Another big event coming up is our Costa Cleanup, our annual event on the 18th of September. The details will be coming out in a variety of different formats through our PIO, but we're organizing and it's being led by our council members as well. So this is one of the, one of the events that we sponsor as a city, and will have quite a bit of interest, I'm guessing, coming out of the Wainey Beach Festival and then the promotions that we'll be doing in support of that event on the 18th. If you've been driving around town and you may have noticed immediately after the Wainey Beach Festival banners came down, the 9/11 banners went up and celebrating, I want celebrating, it's not probably a good word, but in recognition of a 20-year anniversary, where lots of people were called to action on 9/11 to fight terrorism, both in the military and multiple agencies and a variety of different support, that resulted in multiple wars and mortal engagements over time. We will receive several thanks from citizens who have recognized those banners. It's part of our banner program that we activated in the last year. We already talked about movies in the park, I won't go there, but tomorrow we're going to meet with the port and our joint committee. We do that quarterly, and the focus will be on our community benefit fund. Through fiscal year '21 and a balance from the last year of $59,000, we're looking to allocate $173,000 in community benefit fund projects. The meeting will take place tomorrow, and council has participated in and providing recommendations to me, which will go in with the Oxnard Harbor District's recommendations, and the joint committee will reconcile those, discuss those, and come up with a composite list from both agencies to provide back to council for approval. from both agencies to provide back to council for approval. We don't have to execute the entire amount this time, but that is the funds that we have available to allocate for community benefit fund projects. And with that, arrest. Turn it back over to you, Mayor.
When I gave you my list of funding requests for the community benefit fund, I left one out. That was catch cradle. You started giving them on your monthly.
Okay, catch cradle.
Yeah, they, they catch and fix cats on the harbor.
Yes, it was funding in our last round. Okay.
I have a comment too. When I attended the Oxnard Union High School District grand opening, they had an ex-student Maggie Ocampo, and she presented a poem on mental health awareness type genre. And it had to do with teen suicide. And I have reached out to her and I, and I've been trying to come up with something for her and I to work with the city and perhaps go out and do some outreach. I put, I shared her moving poem with Ms. D, Councilmember Perez, and Maya Zumaya with NAMI. And I would like to outreach to her and see if we could bring her here to the council and have her share with us. It was so impactful. It is incredible. And oftentimes, teenagers will listen to other teenagers, particularly when you're talking about mental health and suicide prevention. So I'll try and make that happen, Mr. Connors. All right. Any other comments? Okay, so now we're going to move on to council members' reports and comments. And we'll start with Councilmember Hernandez.
The most interesting, I think, recently was the Southern Health Association of Governments' regional council meeting and the transportation meeting, which pulls appreciation out of every, is a policy, maps for public policy. And they, it, it helps you identify within your community what's going on in the areas of social equity, economic opportunities, transportation infrastructure, resiliency and sustainability, environmental and internal resource, natural resources, environmental and, and public safety. So it's a really neat tool for assessing where we stand in a particular area, either in the city or in the region. The link was shared with me and I'll forward it to the city manager so that I don't know if we have anybody who knows how to use GIS mapping in our city, but we.
We have, yeah.
I'm also asking the city manager to consider under the American Rescue Plan Fund, COVID hazard data for our grocery, grocery workers here in Juanimi. I think we have, maybe about 300. So I don't know.
I make a comment, a comment just before your motion. Any input that I've received since the draft American Rescue Plan project list, I've included and added to it. I've got about five additional projects, which I'll, I'll, I'll return back to council for their review. And that's one of them.
Let's see. We did have a special transportation district meeting. Most of the meetings consisted of us going through David Brown's letter from the Ventura County Taxpayers Association and basically dispelling all the errors and the accusations that were in the letter. Kathleen Wilson was there. I ran into her yesterday, actually, and she says there's still an article going to be coming out, which will hopefully favor VRSC and indicate that WCTA Association was not really acting professionally or acting with, I don't know, they were just not really, their information wasn't there.
Correct. Councilmember Perez?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
We had a successful Juanimi Beach Festival. I thought that was great. On a side note, getting ready to launch a sports and activity program here in the city that's going to be free for our youth and, and anybody else, adults too. It's going to be open to everybody. I think it's most likely going to be implemented next month. So look forward to something in, you know, breaks. So we'll have volleyball, soccer, pickleball, a little bit of everything. Across.
Councilmember Perez?
Boxing, October 1st.
Surfing, every day. Surf daily. Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Just briefly, I attended Ventura County Transportation Association that coordinates all the public transportation throughout the county. And we are losing the executive director Darren Kettle, who actually is advancing to, you know, working through the MTA and stuff. So we're going to be looking for a new person to fulfill his role. He's been doing an outstanding job for the last at least 10 years. And so that's my only comment.
That's it? Okay. I already mentioned Maggie Ocampo. I think she's a wonderful poet, and I hope that we could get her involved in some of our teen suicide prevention activities. The month of September is very busy. We have 9/11 celebrations. We also have Prostate Cancer Awareness Month for September. And Charlie Green and I share the unpleasant fact of having survived prostate cancer. So anybody out there nearing the age of 50, it's very wise to get your PSA checked. And that's not a public service announcement. It's your prostate-specific antigen, if you didn't know. It's just a simple blood test, and it could identify cancer early on, and you could be treated and survive like Charlie and me. Social justice, I'm really enthused, the amount of younger people getting involved in thinking about social justice here in the, our city and surrounding areas, particularly in the environment, and realizing that we deserve a better environment. And we're, we're constantly being exposed to, to new young kids coming out to participate in environmental stewardship, which is really awesome. And as we prepare for the California Coastal Cleanup, I'm so excited to, today, a company called MWS Wires provided 50 brand-new buckets for our continuing effort to keep Juanimi Beach and Ormond Beach free from debris and rubbish. We're going to share 25 of those buckets with the coastal keepers. Mr. Rollins is getting me stickers so that we can make sure all our buckets say, "Reach Juanimi Beach." And again, I just want to thank MWS for that kind donation of 50 buckets to facilitate our continued effort of taking care of our beach environment. And I'm not sure, I'll just go now with this. So early on, when I got elected, one of the first PowerPoints I brought to the city council had to do with coral trees. And we've been recognized for risk management today from the JPA, and that's really great. And I do plan on making it to that October 7th event they have, I forget the name of it, but it's going to be in San Diego. But early on, when, on the council here, I did a PowerPoint, and I identified several coral trees that have failed or were beginning to fail and caused property damage. In the last year and a half, I have photographs in my phone of at least 11 coral trees that have failed. And they failed in a very random way. Some of them, big branches have fallen off. Some of them, the entire tree has fallen over. Some of the coral trees are city property trees. Others were HOA property trees. Some of them were on the base that we saw over there at the Patterson and Chano Islands. And some of them fall across walkways that are highly trafficked. Some of them have smashed into vehicles. And these trees have taken 40 years to get to this point of random failures. So I'm hoping that in the very near future, we could come up with a strategy to address the risk of these trees. Like I said, over the last year and a half, I have probably 11, 12 different photographs of these major failures of coral trees. So just wanted to bring that up. And I was trying to understand why the city of Port Juanimi is a member of that sanitation district if we're not a customer. So maybe at some point, we could get briefed on that. And that's it for my comments. So now we're going to move on to requests for future agenda items. I'd like to remind council members that all requested items will require a motion, a second, and a majority vote per adopted council policies to be placed on a future agenda. Does anyone have a request for a future agenda item? Councilmember Hernandez?
I'd like to follow up to the presentation.
I second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
And Mayor Gama?
Yes. Any other requests for future agenda items? Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor Gama. In regards to the speed bumps, I have been getting a lot of people tell me about the speed bumps. I hadn't heard so many about the ones on Boca, but I have heard a lot on, around the park, bubbling Springs Park. And then I guess some also like on Panoma by the, by the port. So maybe, I, I motion for like a report on where we can put speed bumps and, you know, how much it would cost in maintenance. And, you know, just seeing what we can actually do.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Are there any other requests for future agenda items?
I had one, and I'm not sure how to, Councilman Martinez and I have been working with the Boys and Girls Club about the utilization of their facility for the community. Currently, the facility is available for use on the weekday evenings and on the weekends. The typical Boys and Girls Clubs programs finish at that point. And I would like to put on the agenda the staff to research the, the possibility of having a teen program, a kind of a teen drop-in program at that gym, on the, utilizing that time that it's available, perhaps on the weekends and stuff, when kids are available, to give them a positive alternative towards, you know, utilizing their recreational time or their open time. And so I'd like staff to be, I'd like to have a presentation by staff as to what that would cost. And because the Boys and Girls Club have very positively made that available to the community to utilize it for community programs.
Mr., go ahead.
And I've done some rough calculations. Like if we were to open it up once a week for three hours, with their reasonable prices, it'd be around $3,000 per year.
So if I may, may I restate your motion?
You may.
Okay. I think what I heard is we'd like to have an agenda item where staff develops programming alternatives to be implemented at the Boys and Girls Club here in Juanimi.
And then maybe it could also, I mean, I'm sure it could also be funded with, you know, the ports, what's it called again? Can you guys tell me the specific wording?
Community benefit.
Yeah, the, the community benefit fund, you know?
Yeah, with, with an emphasis right.
Give me a second. Yeah.
Sure.
We just need a second. If my motion is appropriately worded.
The original motion, which was amended by Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor Gama, Mayor Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez? So I have Mayor Gama's amended motion for an agenda item where staff develops programming alternatives to be implemented at the Boys and Girls Club, to which Councilmember Martinez additionally requested the review of whether we can use community benefit funds. Did I capture that correctly? Okay. And Mayor Pro Tem Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Are there any other requests for future agenda items? Okay. And there are comments. We'll go back to council member reports and comments.
I just wanted to add that we are going to have a radio station. It's called Live 1055. They play top party music. And they'll be out there for the cleanup to provide music and entertainment and maybe wrap up prizes.
Cool.
And then I'm also looking for assistance with registration, making people who are good with organizational skills and working with people and getting people who do the live.
Yes. We are going to have a lot of people there, which is good. And our beach is cleaner than it was in years past, which is good. And so we'll.
Pieces are going to be a lot smaller.
That's right. Okay. Are we ready to adjourn this meeting? Last chance for future agenda items. Hearing none, this meeting is going to be adjourned. The time now is, is it 9:55? 10:55. I can't see. 9:55, great. The next city council meeting will be the regular meeting of Monday, September 20th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Is the camera off?